El Segundo, we're going to call this meeting into in order and we're going to roll call and then we got the invocation led by Father Alexi Smith. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Purstak.
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimental.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so Father Alexi Smith will be joining us for the invocation led by Councilmember Baldino. I'm sorry, following with the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
Councilman, if you'd like to change positions, I'd be happy to do so. Let us pray. Oh heavenly King, the Comforter, the Spirit of Truth, President in all blessings, giver of all things, we thank you for this glorious, these glorious summer days and for the gifts of our city which you have entrusted to our care. Glad in our hearts with the fragrance of your love, brighten our eyes with the light of your guidance, delight our ears with the melody of your word, shelter us all in the stronghold of your providence. Allow us to recognize your presence in our midst this evening. Round to the members of our City Council and to all who provide them with input, the spirit of your wisdom and light. May the members of our City Council always act in accordance with your will and may their decisions be for the greater good and well-being of all who live and work in our city. Together, may we continue to provide a unique place in which to live and to work and to raise our families. May we all be led closer to you and to one another and to the eternal blessings you promise. May we never forget those members of our community who are less fortunate than are we. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, worthy and just as well.
Thank you, Father Alexi. Thank you, Councilmember Baldino. I've got two great presentations this evening. First up, we're going to recognize a stellar member of the community, really a pillar of the community, Brenda Newman, for her 15 years of dedication, dedicated service to the Planning Commission, right up here in the dais for so many years. And thank you for being here, Brenda. I know you got your fan club with you here as well. Is that, yes. And so I just want to say, for outstanding 15 years of service on the Planning Commission, your unwavering dedication, leadership, and commitment to our community have played an essential role in shaping our growth and development. Thank you for your vision, hard work, and years of guidance. Your contributions will leave a lasting legacy. So let's give it up again for Brenda Newman. You know the drill, Brenda. We'd love to hear from you. Please. Thank you.
Fifteen years has gone by very quickly and it's been a, it's been a really, really special time. I don't know what else to say, except that it's a great city and I think you guys are doing a terrific job. And I've seen that there's been a lot of available postings for the communities, commissions, and boards and would invite anybody who's not had an opportunity to get involved because it's very, a very interesting and a very special time. So I thank you guys very, very much. That's it.
This drill, I see.
All right, ready? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you again to Brenda Newman. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Mykali, Councilmember Lance Giroux, for recognition of the El Segundo High School's Winter Guard Team. Lance?
All right, and a continuing theme of champions coming out of El Segundo High School in 2024. Are they here? All right, there we go. All right, congratulations to El Segundo High School's Winter Guard Team on winning first place at the Winter Guard International Regional Championships in 2024. Competing against 31 other high school teams from across central and southern California is no small feat and your hard work, dedication, and incredible talent truly shined. Wishing you continued success and more victories in the future. And I'm going to announce the members of the team and I think we have a certificate for them, right? So when I announce, if you can come up here, that'd be great. Holden Cadman. Stephanie Cruz. Is she here? All right. Riley Fisher. Aria Gonzalez. Isabella Gonzalez. Zayla Luna. You weren't expecting me to get that one right, but they phonetically spelled that for me here, so. Oh, see? Who put with a Z on here? I would have gone Shyla. Sorry, Shyla. Julia Nieves. Rose Padlipski. Anastasia Parker. Ashley Reed. Elizabeth Smith. Ari Walters. And Coach Allison Avina Wyant. And Program Director Joey Leon. All right, coach and director, if you'd like to say a few words. That's it. Absolutely. If you want to get the microphone, be cool.
Hello, City Council. Thank you so much for your support. This is a really hardworking team of freshmen all the way through seniors. They work up to 21 hours a week practicing. We compete all across southern California with hopes to take the team to Nationals this coming year and supporting our city. So thank you so much for your support and we look forward to bringing some more proud success our way.
All right, good stuff. Thank you. Now is the time and place for public communications. The, we're going to limit this to five minutes per person, which is the norm, 30 minutes total. And Madam Clerk, how many do we have tonight? 12. Okay, so we're going to actually, in consideration of that, maybe do three minutes each. Still be over the 30 minutes? What do you all think? You okay with that? City Attorney? Okay, three minutes each. And if you could call up the first public commenter, please.
It's going to be Anya Goldstein and after Anya will be Genesis Puckett.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anya Goldstein. I'm an over 10-year resident of El Segundo and a member of the Sweat Equity Alliance, an organization of concerned citizens working to make our town a more welcoming place to live, work, and play. I'm here to speak today about Councilmember Purstak's rogue instruction to turn off the city's pride lights, her lies to cover up her behavior, and her total silence on the issue in the months since. For those who missed it, Councilmember Purstak, on her own and without authority to do so, instructed city staff to stop illuminating the water tower for Pride after receiving a request from an anti LGBTQ+ resident in town. After an uproar on social media, she implied that water tower lighting decisions were made by the city as a whole, but that, in any event, the city had always intended to relight the water tower for Pride after Flag Day. It turns out both of those statements were lies. We later learned, not from an admission but from a Public Records Act request, that Councilmember Purstak made the decision on her own, apparently on an anti LGBTQ+ whim, and that her original instruction to staff was to end the pride lighting on Flag Day, not to resume it after. She hasn't said a peep about this since her blatantly false statements came to light, nor have her fellow council members sought an explanation or an apology, at least not publicly, in a way that would show our community that they care and are committed to integrity and transparency. This community has a right to expect better. I hope today we hear an apology from Councilmember Purstak and I hope that we hear calls for one from her fellow council members. But when we do, let's all remember that it took an uproar on social media, a Public Records Act request, and multiple residents coming to multiple City Council meetings to get there. We deserve better.
Normally, we don't condone applause, but thank you. Madam Clerk?
Genesis Puckett and after her will be Kat Claudini.
Hello. My name is Genesis Puckett. I am an El Segundo resident. Today, I'm here to comment on the situation that happened with Councilmember Carroll in relation to the lighting of the water tower in honor of LGBTQ Pride Month. As I'm sure you know, after being lit in honor of Pride Month, the water tower lights were suddenly changed to red, white, and blue on June 14th. A community member addressed this in a local Facebook page, asking why it would be changed so early for Independence Day. Carroll spotted the state that the lights were only changing for Flag Day and to celebrate President Biden's arrival at LAX, the plan was always to change it back to rainbow for the rest of the month. We know now from a public records request that Carroll, in fact, instructed Director Sassoon to keep the lights red, white, and blue through July 5th. I know many people listening don't understand why the water tower lights are such a big deal. It's because it's all we've got. Aside from presenting our proclamation at the June City Council meeting, there is no outward show of support from the city to the LGBTQ community. And while I'm appreciative of the proclamation, the first Pride proclamation for El Segundo was issued in 2021, which is 22 years after the federal government declared the first Pride Month. We are severely behind and this community deserves better. There are no city-sponsored pride events, so yes, when the water tower lights are cut short, we care. For those who don't care about the LGBTQ community or just don't care about the water tower lights, I'm not here to change your mind. What you should care about is the ease of which Carroll lied openly and boldly to the community. There's also been no apology or effort towards taking accountability. If this lie was typed so easily, how many others have there been? What disturbs me more is that the order came to change the lights to red, white, and blue came two hours after a community member emailed City Council requesting the change. For anyone who doesn't know, the community member in question is responsible for the majority of the most hateful, anti-LGBTQ rhetoric on the community Facebook pages, including the recently discontinued Unfiltered page, in which she was nearly the only person who posted, but she's continued to post her vitriol several times a day. This person has also launched several unprovoked online attacks against my husband and children while hiding behind an account with no photos of herself. So the idea that this person has so much influence in that directive aligned to City Council is absolutely terrifying. I'm here to ask for an apology and for accountability. We needed to see that lying to constituents is unacceptable, no matter the cause, and community is waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Kat Claudini. Sorry. And up next will be Susan Bowling.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Kat Claudini. Been a resident of El Segundo for about seven years. I'm here to address the sudden change of water tower lights from Pride Month rainbow to patriotic red, white, and blue in the middle of June. Councilmember Purstak, you publicly stated on Facebook that the lights would return to rainbow for the rest of the month after Flag Day and President Biden's visit. Yet, behind the scenes, you had already instructed Director Sassoon to keep the American flag colors up until July 5th. This was not just a simple oversight, it was a deliberate act of deception. You misled the public, making us believe that the rainbow lights would return when you had no intention of doing so. I would like to know why you chose to end the rainbow display early, especially while Pride Month was still in full swing. Were you afraid of potential backlash from the more conservative residents or those opposed to LGBTQ+ visibility? The community deserves an honest explanation and frankly, we deserve an apology for the dishonesty and the disregard of Pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Madam Clerk?
Susan Bowling?
Hi, I'm Susan Bowling, otherwise known as the Original Poster. It was my post on the 15th of June about the lights. And obviously, everybody here knows what happened. This is not about a flag anymore. It's not about the lights on the water tower. This is about an elected official lying to her constituents. There was more than 150 people that responded to my post favorably. We had a handful of residents that do the things that they do and make negative, if not homophobic, comments about it, but the vast majority of the responses were positive. And Councilmember Purstak, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name. It's really a question of, it's condescending. We can see the paper trail, thank God, through the Freedom of Information Act. We can see how it moved from a particular resident who's made, had a history of negative comments, getting your attention and within an hour, you requesting that the lights be changed for the entire month. And then unbeknownst to me, a day later, I'm asking, can we get them turned back on for Pride? And instead, we get this mishegoss of, oh, we held them up for Flag Day and then because President Biden, his plane was parked at LAX. I don't know of a time that the council has ever done that. So what we need is transparency, but we also deserve just a straight-up apology. It would have been so much easier to say, okay, hey, we didn't realize this was so important to you. We're reminded, let's go, we'll be back on tomorrow, rather than the very condescending, several-paragraph response that we got, that if this community isn't really all supportive and in for it, we really can't do it. And it's a lot of trouble when you knew that the day before, you had told them to light it for the whole month. So at a minimum, an apology, and I asked the whole council to just look at this. And I just want to say that, just by way of example, I was more than 50 years old before I had the right to legally marry. That right came less than 10 years ago. I'm a 65-year-old woman. I've seen some things. I've been gay my entire life. It's important to your constituents that if you're going to light the water tower or give a proclamation, there are people here that really value that. Not just old people like me who've had to fight really hard for it, but young people. That lights the way. That shows a confidence that I think was in your hearts when you gave the proclamation. And I'm asking you to rise to that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowley.
Brendan Gormley?
Hello. Name is Brendan Gormley. Making comment regarding item 16, under consent today. Hi, and thanks to City Council for listening to me today and for recognizing our Western State Championship Grill's U14 All-Star Team back in May. That was a lot of fun. Everyone was really excited to be here. I'm here as a representative of AYSO. I'm the regional commissioner. Some of you, a couple of you are familiar with AYSO as a nonprofit, 100% volunteer organization. From the refs, coaches, board of directors, we all take time out of our busy schedules to build recreational soccer experience for the residents of El Segundo. In fact, we have right now 918 current registered players, 719 of those are El Segundo residents. So much like other sports in town, we are looking for a public way to honor our players with a parade down Main Street on opening day. I asked the members of City Council to waive 100% of the fees associated with this parade and allow our players kind of that moment to be honored and recognized. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gormley.
Lisa Broderick?
Good evening to the City Council and the mayor. My name is Lisa Broderick and I live at 817 McCarthy Court. I've been here for about 35 years, raised my children here. And in the time that I've been in El Segundo, I have always felt that it was a great town and a safe place. But recently, within the last couple of years, there's been a series of pretty bad actions that have taken place on McCarthy Court. And I think that you should be notified of them. There've been several hit-and-run crashes. My neighbor, Romina List, Dr. List is here, and David, my other neighbor on McCarthy Court, to support me. So on August 7th, some individuals came in their vehicle, flying down McCarthy Court, flew through the stop sign at Walnut and McCarthy, and didn't quite make it around the corner. And I have some pictures that I can show you. And they smashed and destroyed Romina's car. This is not the first time that this has happened. And in addition to that, because of our proximity to Imperial Avenue, there's a lot of people that come into the city through there. And there've been a couple of hit-and-runs there before. And I've contacted the city just recently about adding speed bumps, signage, and more lighting there so that it can be safer. But I took a walk down the street and I was shocked at how many people had had their cars broken into with the catalytic converter stolen and that type of thing. So I just wanted to share this with you. And I just was very sad because the kids, and I know this because I submitted the video to the police, that destroyed Romina's car, backed up, one person got out of the car and ran away, and the other person in the driver's seat went up towards Romina, made a left, and then escaped. And as far as I know, I don't have any feedback from the police that these people have been held accountable for their reckless and endangering behaviors. So I just would like your support. I know that when citizens come forward, I know there's a lot of things going on in town and there's a lot of traffic concerns. There's a lot of things that happen in the street. But there's only two meetings a year to address citizen concerns. And I would hope that you would be mindful of that and especially with schools starting, that we would maybe accelerate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Broderick.
Adriana? I do not want to mess up your last name, Adriana.
It's Ye Greg, if you need that last name. My name is Adriana and I grew up in El Segundo. I'm proud to have been a cougar, a bulldog, and an eagle. Were playing four years of varsity softball and captaining the team my senior year helped me develop life skills and values that I still use as a director of a large work team. One of my core values as a team leader is accountability, which I come seeking from you today. Councilmembers Purstak's actions were wrong. That's clear, and I don't feel the need to expand on that. Yet there has been no acknowledgement or apology of her concerning behavior. I assume, I assume, or at least I would hope, that she's grossly embarrassed, but embarrassment doesn't supersede accountability. What is actually more concerning to me, though, is the silence from the rest of council. With the blunder here being so publicly obvious, it truly saddens me that not one, but all would try to sweep it under the rug, which it seems to be doing. One of the values of this council is, and I quote, ethics. We are accountable and responsible for our actions, transparent in our processes, and follow professional standards while taking calculated risks to provide solutions. While not only was Carroll's risk not very calculated, but transparency had to be sought through a Public Records Act by a community member, and there's still no accountability. Another council value is, I quote, collaboration. Another council value is, I quote, "collaboration." We work as one team on behalf of our community. So it's fair to say Carol dropped the ball, and none of you have picked it up. And that is the only reason that I am here today. Whether anyone likes it or not, the entire month of June has been proclaimed LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and our city, our state, and country agree. I'm asking for this council to not only abide by your values, but to also commit to the proclamation and stand proud to support all of the members of this community. I'm proud to be a member of the LGBTQ+ community, and I want to continue to be proud to be from El Segundo. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean O'Brien.
Good evening, council. My name is Sean O'Brien, and I'm a resident of El Segundo. As a new appointee to the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, I'm grateful to see efforts around the city to make El Segundo minority residents feel welcomed and celebrated. Being a member of the LGBTQ+ community, one such effort that I applaud in particular is the annual tradition of lighting the water tower and rainbow lights during Pride Month. Like many others, I was upset to learn about the lack of transparency around why the rainbow lights were shut off this past June and Councilmember Persnick's false statements made on the El Segundo Parents Network. The residents of El Segundo deserve an apology from Councilmember Persnick and an explanation as to why she purposely misled her constituents. These statements were proven to be incorrect, and her actions go against the principles of integrity, transparency, and honesty, which I know are values that are extremely important to all members of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mark Feldman.
Good evening. Oops. Good evening. My name's Mark Feldman. I'm an attorney for Dash Construction. This is regarding item number eight on your consent agenda. One of the attorneys in my office is passing out some handouts. We're just going to go over a couple of pages very quickly. El Segundo has a competitive bidding requirement for construction projects and typically rejects bids that are not filled out correctly. And why do you do this? I gave you a copy of a case called Conica Business versus Regions. All you have to do is look at page six, and it tells you why you do what you do. The purpose of requiring governmental entities to open the contracts process to public bidding is to eliminate favoritism, fraud, and corruption. The importance of maintaining integrity in government and the ease with policy goals underlying the requirement for open competitive bidding may be surreptitiously undercut mandate strict compliance with bidding requirements. So I'm not saying that the city has done anything corrupt or that there's favoritism on the part of the city, but what I'm saying is, the case law tells us, we have to avoid even the appearance of fraud, favoritism, or corruption. And that's why we're here today. If you look at page 10 of the handout, you will see addendum one to this bid. Addendum one replaced certain sections of the bid, and it said at the bottom, "As evidence that the bidder has read this addendum, the bidder must acknowledge same in the space provided below and submit this addendum with the proposal. Failure to provide such acknowledgment shall render the proposal non-responsive." So there's the word "must" in there and "shall" in there. And I saw some high school students earlier, which was nice to see. So it would be nice if the city council let those students know that "must" and "shall" are mandatory and that they're not things that can be waived. If you look at the very next page, page 11, you will see some of the revised documents, and they say revised at the top. And you gave each bidder these documents. They had to acknowledge that they received it. They were revised. They were different than what was in the original bid documents. And then, if you look at pages 29 through 52, I'm not going to make you look at it right now, but I've given you the entire bid from LCR that provided a bid. And guess what? You will find nowhere in that bid addendum number one. It was mandatory that they sign this form, submit it with their bid, and they didn't. It was mandatory that they used the revised documents that you gave them, and they didn't do that. There's also a bond that's referenced on page 38 of what I gave you along with the bid. It says that it's supposed to be signed. You're supposed to put your name, your title.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Okay. We filled out a second speaker card for a representative. Can I use his time as well?
That's fine. No? Okay. City Attorney says no, so I'll defer to the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's up next, Madam Clerk?
Majid. Majid.
Hello, this is Majid Hajizad. I'm from Dash Construction Company. It's an honor to be here. I have worked for the city of El Segundo, one of the best cities that I have ever known. As a contractor working in a city, be so prompt and so delicate of the work, which was paved like about a year ago, El Segundo from Superbode to Woolworth all the way to Whiting Street. We had a bid here last year or two years ago that one of the items was, the first item was, the bidder cannot put more than 5% in the mobilization part of the bid. There was a company called Hardy &amp; Harper. Instead of $50,000 max, they put $75,000. And although we were $60,000 more on that bid, city took the bid from them after being awarded, did a writing, took it out, and we performed the job. And I think, I'm sure that, you know, I've heard that the city was very happy with the work. So when we are bidding on a project, we should be very, very careful to go with all the requirements of the bid. And if there's a contractor that don't really pay attention to the requirements of the bid, we are spending time, you know, getting all those numbers straight out, and we see that, you know, that contractor is getting awarded, although they are not complying with everything in the bid, is really disappointing for me as a contractor and everybody else that they are bidding in this project, for any city. I mean, we are doing this from 2005. There'd been a time that we did not sign and acknowledge the addendum, and they took away the job from us because it was a requirement. It was a word of must and shall and all that, you know, we didn't pay attention back in the time. So me being here, want to sincerely request the city, please, you know, do the writing like you did all the time and, you know, reject the bid from the lower bidder, which they did not comply with the bid. I'm sorry, I can't answer. I have a second, 20 seconds. Yes, exactly. So I'm asking the city council, Honorable City Council of El Segundo, to reject the bid and award it to the contractor that complied with the bid items. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Diane Sampras?
No problem.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
Good evening, council members. Would you mind? First of all, I want to say to everyone, the last time I was here, I'm going to say the first time I was here, it was almost like a joke. I'm from the city of Inglewood, and the big debate discussion was tulips or daffodils for some day. And I'm sitting here going, this has got to be staged, because of course, Mike Gordon had been working with those of us concerned about the airport, and we're going, seriously, these are their issues. I mean, come on, I'm from Inglewood. If you think you know traffic in the city of El Segundo, come sit on Prairie Inn Century a day. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because the Sentinel Adobe is the first home of the South Bay. Built in 1834, it was a land grant to Ignacio Machado. August 8th, we will be celebrating, I'm sorry, September 8th, you didn't miss it. We will be celebrating our Hispanic heritage, complete with mariachis, poploric dancers, handmade tortillas, weaver spinners, and lace makers, because we believe that history is terribly important. And it's important because we all have to know how we got here, don't we? To be able to pledge to a flag, sometimes we don't do that very often anymore, and I want to thank you for that, because it is that flag that represents our opportunity to come and openly discuss all the many, many things that you take on and have the responsibility for voting on. We have a veterans' room dedicated to those who have fought to give that right to all of us. And of course, as a woman, yes, I take the opportunity to say, we haven't always had that right, but thank goodness, there were suffragettes that gave us that privilege. And I hope that as men look at women, you do think that some of us do deserve a little bit more credit than we are often given for thinking thoroughly through many of the issues before us. But because history is important, we also believe it should be fun. So please, I implore you to please come visit. We are open every Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 for a generic tour, but September 8th will be our festival, and you will be privileged to have tours, all the festivities, and of course, a penthouse party. So the public is welcome. It is free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Unfortunately, Sean O'Brien already spoke, so we only allow ones.
I didn't mean to have him too. Sorry.
It's okay. And so next up would be John Paul Kosico.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Paul Kosico. I'm here to talk about Dash Construction Company's bid protest. Item number eight, I believe, in the agenda. We would just like to request that the city be consistent with the competitive bidding process and ask that you reject the bid of LCR, the current lowest bidder. As Mr. Feldman had mentioned earlier, they didn't submit a mandatory form. That is something that you cannot waive legally. LCR also used the wrong bid documents. It doesn't even mention in the staff report. And I believe you still have the forms in front of you, but the case law that Mr. Feldman cited earlier states that, you know, the city council must avoid even the appearance of favoritism as to any contractors. And so we actually also requested that, you know, this matter be removed from the agenda so that we can work through it with legal counsel, but that wasn't granted. So again, we ask that you reject the bid of LCR and award the project to Dash Construction. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes my speaker cards.
All right. That concludes public comments. Thank you very much from the public for those that spoke. Mr. George, would you like to address some of the comments?
Yes. Mayor, for the AYSO speaker, that's item 16 on your agenda tonight, so that will be a full staff report on that item for discussion, as well as item number eight, which is the bid item that the speakers are talking about. That is on consent, number eight on consent. So that also has a full staff report for your consideration. What's the city attorney wants to add anything?
Just, staff report covers the issue on the addendum, and the bid documents say that it would make, if you didn't sign the addendum, that it'd make it subject to being rejected. It didn't say it shall be rejected. There was other language in there. So given that the addendum was not substantive, staff, and I agree, believe that it should be awarded to the lowest bidder and that they substantively complied with the bid documents.
Okay. And then the September 8th festival, I see you have some flyers. Please leave those on the table in the back so people can gather once they leave. Thank you for that. And then regarding the McCarthy Court, Lisa Broderick, I will meet with the police chief and public works director to discuss that item further. And then finally, the number of speakers on the water tower, lighting of the water tower. Staff is currently working on bringing item back to council, recommending your consideration to establish a policy on how we light the water tower or not, and that will be coming next month for your consideration.
Mr. George, would you also follow up with Ms. Broderick and the others that are here at McCarthy Court?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
That concludes me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously, there was a lot of discussion on the water tower. I know that is, there's a policy now that we're going to try to put in place that's coming on September 3rd, but I do want to make a brief comment that July 2nd was when that happened. That was when that council meeting happened, and Councilmember Pizdick was not here for that. She was away at a competition. So I'm only speaking for myself here. My colleagues can speak for themselves, but my feeling in a situation like this is that I need to allow the person to defend themselves or talk or make a decision how they want to address it. So I know there's some call-outs, some why the four of us didn't say anything, do anything. We're adults up here. We've all been through a lot of different things, and I believe it's important to allow people to address things in their own way and their own time. And we have not had a meeting since that day. This was, it just kind of caught a perfect storm. It went from July 2nd, and then this is literally the first time we have had a council meeting since then. So I just did want to mention that as part of the process. So my feeling is, is that an individual should have an opportunity to speak on their own behalf, and I didn't want to speak for them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have, anything further? Anyone good? Okay. I may, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Have a motion to approve. So moved. Have a second.
Six.
Baldino, seconds. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Consent. Any polls on consent? No. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll number eight, just to fully understand our options on that.
Okay. Any other polls? All right. Do I have a motion to approve items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16? Oh, one quick note I just thought of, sorry. Before we do that, the Speaker, Mr. Gormley, we have a request for 75% waiver, and I know he requested 100% waiver.
Yes.
Is that something the staff already discussed?
Let me defer to our Parks Director.
Why don't you pull it? Yeah, I think I'm going to pull that one. Because I just wanted to clarify that, okay. All right, so there's a poll. I'm going to poll 16, and Chris polled...
Eight.
Eight. All right. Do we have a motion to approve all the others excluding eight and 16?
Baldino, so moves.
Great, thank you. Second?
Sure, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Five, zero. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pulling item eight, the construction contract with LCR Earthworks and Engineering Corp. for $2 million, an associated professional services agreement with Anser Advisory for fiscal year 2425 pavement rehabilitation project. My question to you, city attorney, is, we believe on the staff side that because it's not material, we have the ability to waive that and move ahead with the contract. Clearly, there's a disputed item on there. What are our courses of action besides approval or award a contract? Do we have the ability to extend the time? And if people want to resubmit paperwork, they can and fill out said addendum? Or is it proceed or award to someone else?
As far as the addendum itself, the contract's going to be all-inclusive, so that's not really an issue. Your choices are to award to the lowest bidder. You don't have to waive that irregularity. You don't have to follow staff's recommendation, but I mean, it would be, from staff's perspective, that'd be pretty hyper-technical, and I guess Dash Construction also had a problem with its bid, and there was a math error. It was only $4,000, but again, it's an error. So I guess in theory, if you're going to be really technical, you would go potentially to the third bidder, but you're almost $400,000 more at that point in time, so you might want to then just rebid the project. So, do that make sense?
No, thank you for the explanation. Anyone have a...
It would, your options are, we can do the recommendation of staff, which is, we have the authority to disregard the failure of executing an addendum, because substantively it complied with what we were after. And remember, a public bidding process is, we're gonna ask contractors to give us under seal their best price for this work, we're gonna look at them all at the same time, and we're, we're gonna give it to the lowest qualified bidder. Staff has looked at it and considered that despite the fact that this wasn't signed or that addendum wasn't, it still substantively complies, and that's the contract we would go in. If you're not happy with that, then we could cancel all the bids, and then you're rewarded again, but now we're doing a second bite at the apple in the marketplace, and there's no guarantee we'll get the price that we have right now locked down.
Yeah, no, that was the question, if the option C is to blow the whole process out.
You would blow the whole, you would start over, and now you're just a couple of, you know...
Staff, staff has concerns about doing that and starting over from perspective of timing.
Yeah, it's, it slows everything down, and then...
The weather, and, I mean, and, and, allies can address that better than I can, but I understand the weather conditions will be, the temperature and whatnot of the roadway is, is better to get going on it now rather than delaying this.
I'm comfortable awarding it to the lowest bidder based upon the representation of staff.
Are you moving approval?
No, I'm just telling you my two cents, since we're talking about it, buddy. And anyone else have thoughts on this?
You know, I, I, we got a briefing, I looked at the staff report, I agree with Councilmember Baldino, substantively, they have met the requirements, and we should go forward with staff's recommendation. That would be my, my opinion.
All right, I will move approval. Baldino seconds.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Madam Clerk, thank you. All right, I polled item 16, waiver of special event permit fees 75% for El Segundo AYSO Region 92 Opening Day Parade. This is the first this is happening, right? Is this a first occurrence?
This is the first time that they've hosted this event, yes.
Yeah, and what do we do for the other groups, and what's our protocol? I can't remember.
So, in December of 2023, I brought a policy to all of you that we discussed and you all eventually approved, and it basically establishes a procedure wherein, when someone requests a fee waiver, the staff fill out a scorecard, and there's several criteria listed on that scorecard, and we accumulate a total score, and based on that score, the applicant can receive up to a 75% discount on the related fees for city services. There were a couple of events, maybe five or six, that the council did approve to grandfather in, who had full fee waivers, some of those being the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade, I think the one, the Little League Opening Day Parade, there were a few others. So at that time, you all voted to grandfather those events in at 100%, but moving forward, the maximum amount, according to the policy that we created and was subsequently approved, is 75%.
Thank you for that.
So, I haven't, I, I was gonna ask you about the Little League Parade.
Yes.
Because it's the same, very similar parade. It's gonna walk down from Grand.
Correct.
And cut through on, so if we're gonna give them 100%, should we not be consistent in what we're doing to the both?
I think that's a policy decision.
Well, if, if we have a policy where you fill out a form and you get 75, then to be consistent, we should stick with the form, right? Even though you grandfathered some in, now we have a policy that, when, when did the policy come about?
Uh, December 2023.
Yeah, so it's still a new policy, but I feel like we have a policy, we should, we should stick with the policy. The most important question, what's the day of the parade so people can go?
I believe it's the 14th, is that correct? Seventh?
September 7th?
Correct. September 7th.
All right, September 7th.
I'm sorry, September 7th.
September 7th.
And at 75%, what is that fee?
Um, I think it's about $5,000, $4,000. The 75% waiver is $15,000.
I just, for me, you know, if we're giving 100% to the Little League, it's, I think it would be unfair for us to not give the same to the soccer.
But then where do you draw the line on...
True, well then, I mean, you can't just say, well, because the Little League's been doing it forever, we're just gonna give it to them for free. I just think if you're gonna institute a policy, then you institute a policy for everybody.
I think what you're saying is, we did institute a policy. Was that...
But we grandfathered the...
That's correct. Both are correct.
We grandfathered the Little League in, so they do not pay the $5,000.
No, I understand.
And several others. I think there's the Chamber, there's, I think, five or six events that the council has historically considered, covered all the fees for, and you voted to approve those, that list of events.
Because this is the same, the same basic opening day parade. It's very similar, correct? It's gonna be basically mirroring what they do, so one's costing $5,000, one's free. So I just, it just sounds, it just seems to me a little bit unfair.
We've been using this policy, Brett.
That's correct.
So there's other people who've been getting the 75%?
Yes.
They don't do an opening day parade that mirrors the Little League parade. I mean, this is, what do we charge the high school for that parade?
I don't know, I don't have that off the...
So, I mean, it's like, we have three parades, right? We have the regular Chamber Parade, with Little League Parade, and we have the High School Parade, and now we're adding one more parade, and that one, they're the only of the three that are gonna pay $5,000. It just seems a little unfair. It's my personal opinion.
I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Perstik, but also, we set a policy, we set a precedent. I think we should stick with the 75% as much as I'd like to help AYSO, as a former longtime coach myself, and also, not that we want to create a deterrent, but can you imagine if everyone's like, I want to do a parade, there's zero cost to the city, I just need this criteria, we'd be every other weekend, but I think it's an incredible idea, I think you're gonna sign up a couple hundred new members as a result, but I think we should stick with staff's recommendation of policy, personally. Any further comments? Someone like to move approval?
So there's 719 participants, we're basically charging every child $7 to walk down Main Street?
Is that a bargain or not? I'm trying to understand.
I mean, it sort of sounds bizarre, like, come to AYSO parade, pay to do it?
I, I think the policy was that the city was subsidizing a lot of events, and there was a push from council to get some cost back on what the actual costs were for providing city services, and then we realized that there are some groups that really are a benefit, we want to discount those groups, and so there's a spreadsheet, right? You check out, we're a nonprofit, we're mostly El Segundo residents, we do this, and the more points you get, the less your fee goes down.
Oh, no, I was here for the first two iterations of the, of the, the scorecard has changed about, it changes every two years depending on who asks for a discount.
I mean, the flip side is, we're subsidizing $15,000 of city services for the, for AYSO. So, any further discussion?
I'm, I'm ready to move approval of item 16 at 75%.
Okay, was that, that was a motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll second that. Alls in favor? Any further discussion? Nope, alls in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Three, two, we haven't had those in, one of those in a while.
Thank you, Council.
Feels good, feels good. Contentions, like the Knesset. Democracy right there.
Throwing shoes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gormly, for being here, appreciate it. No public hearings, we're on to, oh, we're gonna move up, thank you, yeah, Councilwoman Baldino, we're gonna move up item 22, Library Board of Trustee Presentation. Mr. Hoffman.
All right, good eve, good evening, City Council. It's an honor for me to be here to brief you very, very briefly on the activities of the Library Board of Trustees over the last 18 months. Do you, are the slides that I sent available, or does the city council members have?
I know, I think it might be in our, we're not allowed to touch technology, we wouldn't get it right.
Okay.
It's true. Show everyone the password.
I know, Superman.
All right, well, I, I'd like to say that you're missing an amazing AV presentation, but it is just five slides. So, on behalf of the entire Library Board of Trustees, please to give a brief overview to the current members of the Library Board of Trustees, Kristy Sherrill, Janice Murva, Carol Erickson, and Bonnie Yatabi, and myself. The, the board meets every other month, on the first Tuesday, sorry, the second Tuesday of the month, obviously at the library. And the primary functions and things that we do during those meetings is we hear from the library manager, Mark Herbert, the El Segundo Unified School District Librarian, as well as the Friends of the Library, nonprofit organization, I think you all know, is a big supporter of the library, and I'll touch on that in a minute. So the next couple, or next few slides that I see that you don't, are gonna cover 2023 activities, 2024, and then a final, a few, a few final thoughts. So, significant, two major things that happened during 2023. One was the update to the bylaws. The city council had asked all of the boards to go through that process, and so that was reviewed by the board and reviewed and then approved. Probably of a larger decision-making activity was around the update of the library collection development policy. This is the policy that guides the library staff on how they're going to get books, maintain books, and I think most importantly for the board was really around the discussions that we've all seen over the last number of years around, you know, people challenging books within our entire society, I think less so here in El Segundo, but it was important for the library and the library board to sort of state its position with respect to this. And I, I highlight a couple of areas that were noted. In the final documentation, or this final document, it allows and points out that any person can reject or not appreciate that something's in the library, but that does not give that person the right to tell someone else that they are not allowed to have that. And that was a very important point to the board. And the second very important point was, it talks about parental responsibility in making sure that parents are involved in the things their, their children are seeing or checking out of the library. That's not the job of the library staff. So those things were put in, and this was the first update in 27 years of the, of this policy, so kind of a generational change, also reflected changes to the internet being around and electronic book policy. 2024, two things, and so this brings us up to July, so we still have other, more, more meetings, of course, this, this year, but updated rules of conduct, in particular to address some issues that the library staff were having with patrons that were being difficult. And so, the library director and team worked and looked at other library policies from other libraries in Southern California, and in particular leveraged a policy that Long Beach Library used effectively, so that those changes were made, and in fact, that new policy was, has been used twice now, I think in coordination with the city attorney and maybe the police to actually address bad behavior from two, two patrons, who, at least for now, are not allowed to show up in the library anymore. And lastly, the operating hours were changed at the library. We, during the week, Monday, or Monday through Thursday, previously, the library closed at 9:00. Due to low utilization, the recommendation was made, let's change that to 8:00 PM. That was approved, but importantly, those hours that are quote-unquote "saved" there are being used by library staff to continue other programming activities. And then final, final thoughts, hopefully you all remember that in 2023, the, the library celebrated its 75th anniversary, and that was a big celebration, as it should have been. Other notable things that have happened in this time period, there's a new catalog system that the library implemented called Polaris. That was a major undertaking. Anyone that's involved with IT knows shifting from one major database system to the next is, is not trivial feat, but that went very smoothly. And I'd also like to point out that the several library infrastructure items have been completed. I think you're aware of them, but just for the record, Mark worked to get a grant from the state of California that addressed both the moisture issues on the south wall, HVAC system, and an upgrade to the elevators. And then, the, and the Friends of the Library showing the partnership with the library, the aquarium downstairs in the kids' area was, started to have a small leak, and so no city funds were used in the replacement of that. The, as Mark reported, all of the fish went on vacation for a little bit, and then when the aquarium was, was updated, the fish came back from vacation, and so that, that was a great project. I want to say on behalf of the, the Board of Trustees that Mark Herbert and the rest of the library staff are true professionals in what they do, they care about the library, they care about this city, and we believe they should be commended for their efforts. And, and there's also just a really robust set of activities that happen at the library, and if, if citizens of the, of El Segundo haven't had a chance to, you know, go discover that, just show up at the library, look at the flyers, there's really great programming. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll take that, and otherwise, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Hoffman?
Thanks for your report. Your PowerPoint is in the agenda, so don't feel like we missed out on your slides.
Oh, okay, oh, good.
We can, we can look at them all we want, they're great slides, great slides. Thank you so much for your time on the Comedian Commission, we appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
I do want to thank you, Eric, you know, and, you know, it takes a lot to volunteer to be part of something, and I just want to thank you for everything you do for our community and to, you know, help the library move to the next future, and thank you for the report, and it's important that, you know, we are always looking toward the future to ensure that we are servicing our residents as much as possible, so I appreciate that everything you guys are doing, and please keep us abreast of any technology, anything that you see a change, a trend in libraries that we need to be looking toward. We are always open and willing to, to adopt, you know, new things for the library, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks again. This is a received and filed, do we have consensus? I believe so, yes, great, thank you. All right, Mr. Mo, you're up. Item 23, which is the Recreation and Parks Commission update, another longtime volunteer. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Bob Moda, and I am the Recreation and Parks Commission Chair. I'm here this evening to share some of the accomplishments of the Recreation and Parks Commission from the past year, before I begin to acknowledge my, my college, my colleagues include Vice Chair Kelly Watson, Commissioner Dave Lubes, Commissioner Julie Stolnak, and our newest commissioner, Mark Covignolo. I would also like to thank, excuse me, and acknowledge the Recreation, Parks, and Library staff that we work with, including Department Director Ally Mancini, Recreation Manager Linnea Palmer, and Park Superintendent Christopher Hansen, who was here, and, and of course, all of the 125 staff that work every day to make our parks and recreation program the best in Southern California. In the past year, we've worked on several important projects, and I would like to highlight a few of them for the council tonight. This past year, the commission introduced a new permitting process for individual instructors who utilize city parks and facilities to conduct business. This helps capture additional revenue to maintain the parks from the additional wear and tear that results from this use. This permitting process also helps prevent overuse of the green spaces that are designed to be enjoyed by the community for passive recreational use. The commission also reviewed and amended the city's youth sports field allocation policy, which will come before the city council for review in September. This policy establishes a priority use structure for user groups that helps ensure the public spaces are being utilized in alignment with the city's priorities. The commission has also played an active role in the beginning phases of the Recreation and Parks renovation project, reviewing initial designs and concepts that will move forward to council on September 17th. This project will bring much-needed upgrades to our beloved Recreation Park that serves all residents in El Segundo, from infants to adults. Older adults, like me. These projects are just a few of the more significant ones that the commission has weighed in on this year, and, and there are many others. Working with staff is our privilege, it is our privilege to ensure that El Segundo has the cleanest and... the cleanest and safest parks and the most robust recreation programs for our community. The community can also learn more about all the happenings, the latest happenings within the department by following our social media page on Instagram at ES Rec and Parks, and on our department webpage at elsagundorexparks.org. As a reminder, the Recreation and Parks Commission meeting, the commission meets monthly on the third Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and the public is encouraged to attend. Thank you for giving me this time to speak, and thank you for allowing me to volunteer for the many years that I've been on the commission.
Thank you very much, sir, and it's good seeing you at two events today associated with Rec Park.
I was going to say, are you sick of seeing me already?
No, it's amazing. And by the way, just real quick, on Saturday, I just happened to be cruising through Rec Park with my wife, and the kite day was amazing. It was so cool to see everyone out there flying kites. The park was fully engaged and activated. It was awesome.
That's great.
Yeah, any questions for Mr. Moda?
No, just thank you for your service, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and thank you, Bob, for everything you've done. I know you've been a champion for our parks for many, many years, and it really, it really shows. And, you know, one of the things about living in El Segundo, I've always said, our parks and recs enable us to have a country club feel without having to pay for the country club, and stewardship, like, from people like you and your leadership of making sure our parks continue to stay the top-notch order is really appreciated. So thank you very much, and I know, I know we haven't done the best of jobs of making sure our capital improvement dollars have been going to keep our parks, but we're dedicated to that. We've put a reserve in place to make that happen. The plunge kickoff today, and then we're doing the Parks and Recs, the Phase 1 of Parks and Recs in the very near future, that's coming up the next council meeting for approval. So I just, you know, we will be making it happen, and I know that myself, and I'm sure the rest of the council is really dedicated to ensure that our capital improvement, our money is going to make our Parks and Recs the jewel of our town again.
Good, thank you.
Thanks so much. I think this is a receive and file, so appreciate, appreciate it, Bob. All right, thank you very much for that. Let's see, we're going on to item 17, back in order on the agenda, Revised Classification Specifications and Resolution Establishing Basic Salary Ranges for Recreation Leader, Senior Recreation Leader, and Recreation Specialist, and Elimination of Recreation Assistant Classification Director of HR Rebecca Reddick.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm going to recuse myself as I have a child who is a part-time parks employee, so have fun.
Oh, yeah. First time ever. From four years straight. She's making money, she makes more than I do. So earlier this year, I did a very comprehensive review of the, our part-time aquatics positions. So this was the next piece. I did a comprehensive review of the recreation series, which currently has four classifications in it, rec assistant, rec leader, senior rec leader, and rec specialist. And with this review, I have realigned the qualifications for each job, and I'm also recommending that we eliminate the rec assistant. The rec assistant position was meant to be the entry level into the series. This has not been used for the last two years. We've been using rec leader. So this brings the recreation part-time series down to three classifications from four. I'm also recommending that we move from six salary steps to five salary steps. These are part-time seasonal positions. The amount of tenure in the lower positions is less than the journey level and the advanced journey level positions, so there's really no reason to have six steps, because if you had six steps, that means the person would be here for at least five years, and that's not the case. The other recommendation is to realign the salary steps. Currently, the salary steps for the ranges are all over the place, and typically when you move from one position in a series to the next position, you get a 5% increase. The salary steps were not aligned, so this now aligns them and stairsteps them. So for recreation leader, the middle step, step C, is now step A for the next classification, and then you stair-step it. C is A, and then C is A. And I also did a salary survey for the rec series, and realigning these and restructuring the salaries places us within the main of our survey agencies. It also, more importantly, fits within the city of El Segundo's established classification The cost, the fiscal impact for this, assuming that we are able to fill all of our budgeted hours for this, would be $144,000 for this fiscal year. I do have, also the salaries is important to note, for these positions have not been adjusted since December of 2020, so it's been almost four years. I do have significant changes to the job descriptions, which are included in the staff report with the red line and the clean versions. I'm available if you have any other questions.
Since our last revision, minimum wage has gone up twice, I believe, right?
Minimum wage has gone up twice, so essentially, the recreation leader position, the salary structure as it is now, we can't use the first step, we can't use the second step because they're below minimum wage. So the third step is 1654, and so that's essentially step one. So that is where I anchored the rec leader, because that's what we're paying now for the entry into the, into the series, and that is in line with minimum wage.
Any questions for, it's actually interesting, because if you look at fast food, if you have 50 or more employees, there are 20, I think, now? And that's actually where we're competing. If you think about kids that want to work in rec like me, when I worked in rec, was throwing kids down a toboggan, or pushing them, I should say. My other job was McDonald's for $3.35 an hour, and I think the city was right there. So it's, it's not just that we're competing, it's not just with the minimum wages in our sector, if you, you know, if you will, it's also what we're competing for out there with people that can get fast food at 20 bucks minimum.
Right, and that was also a significant reason why the lifeguard classification ranges were established the way they were, because we were competing with the $20 an hour minimum wage. So now the lifeguard classifications are reduced to one step, and they start at $21. So we're above minimum wage, but then it also puts us for the higher classifications in line with our surrounding agencies for competing talent. And our rec leader positions don't require as many certifications as the lifeguard positions do, so these are paid slightly less.
What's that? No, this, no, no, this is just, we have a couple things before us. One is motion to approve, and then attorney read the title, council motion to adopt. So first, would someone like, I'll move approval to revise the classification specifications for the recreation leader, senior recreation leader, and recreation specialist positions. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Third up, the city attorney will read the title, not next up, not third.
A resolution establishing basic salary ranges for part-time job classifications is ready for adoption.
I'll move approval. Second?
Pimentel, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 3-0. And, okay, we need one more. Eliminate the recreation assistant classification. I'll move approval. Move a second?
I will second the elimination.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Eliminated, okay. Thank you very much. All right, you don't go anywhere, though, because we'll bring back Councilmember Baldino and Councilmember Drew. Both of your children no longer have jobs. Item 18, first reading of an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter 1 through 6, Personnel Merit System to Remove the Senior Civil Engineer Under List of Positions Exempt from the Civil Service System and Revised Classification Specification for Senior Civil Engineer. Mrs. Reddick?
Thank you. So we have been slowly transitioning our manager-level positions in our classification structure here to an at-will status. The manager level is typically the level that's right below the department head. So in the engineering series, the senior civil engineer, that position was created in November of 2014. And when that position was created, the intent behind it from the staff report, they designated that as at-will, so that they can provide flexibility if there was a fluctuation in the funding for CIP, capital improvement projects. So if there was a fluctuation, they wanted to designate that position at-will because they wanted to have the ability to eliminate it if, if there was a budget concern. We currently have a vacancy at our senior civil engineer position right now, and before we do recruitments, we do reviews of the position and, and the classification and where we're at. So this position does not align anymore with where we're moving with the city's classification structure. So this position is actually the, the department head, and then there's two positions. So this is the fourth level in the engineering series in Public Works Department. So this is not one that we would designate as at-will. So the intention with this item tonight is to remove the at-will status. Additionally, when I review the class spec for this one, because we are preparing to open a recruitment, the level above it, the principal engineer and the senior civil engineer had the same level of years of experience required. So that has been, that has been restructured from five years to four years to make it more appropriate, because it is the next level position down. With this being not designated as at-will, it requires a first reading of the ordinance, a second reading of the ordinance, and the person, after we conduct a recruitment, if it's converted to, if the at-will status is removed, they would be required to serve a one-year probationary period. They still would remain in the management and confidential unit. There would be no change to the salary, it's just a change to the at-will status.
Well, I'm thoroughly confused, but thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Reddick?
I think the rationale, I understand that we're taking what's currently an at-will position, and we're putting it at, not at-will, which means it's going to be in a union.
Back in the civil service, no. It just, it just would be back in civil service. It would still be unrepresented management confidential.
Okay, but aren't they represented, too?
The management and confidential are unrepresented employees that are not in a bargaining unit.
Okay, okay, and the rationale is because it's not like a senior position, but lower down, it's, it makes more sense to not have it be this at-will.
Correct.
Because the idea was, as our capital improvements go up, we need people. As it goes down, we don't, but that's now longer an issue.
But that hasn't been the case. We have an incumbent that's been in the position for a number of years, so our, you know, our CIP at the time, in 2014, maybe that was the case, but we're still moving forward with our projects. But the reason to remove the at-will status is because this position is not considered a management, a higher-level management position right underneath the department head, which is in line with all the other positions that are designated at-will.
So you want to just clean it up so it falls in line with other departments?
Exactly, and also, this, I think, will be helpful to us in the recruitment process, because it is a lower-level position. You don't typically have lower-level positions that are at-will status.
Okay, any further questions? Someone like, we got a few things before us. One is, if there are no further questions, the first one is the attorney reads the title, and a council member will just introduce it for a second reading later, so. Any further questions? We good? City attorney?
Mayor and council, an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, Chapter 1-6, Personnel Merit System to Remove the Senior Civil Engineer from the list of positions exempt from the Civil Service System is ready for introduction.
We just need one member to introduce.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Pimentel with the introduction.
This will be brought back at the September 3rd meeting for possible adoption.
Thank you. Also have to approve the revised classification specification for civil, I'm sorry, senior civil engineer. Would someone like to move approval?
Sure, Baldino, so moves.
Thank you. You have a second?
Pimentel, second.
Great. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. All right, item 19, Agreements for the City's Replacement Enterprise Resource Planning Systems Services and Related Management Services. And I see our CFO approach, oh, Mr. Drew, sorry.
I just wanted to say, mayor and council, we have actually three departments that'll be participating in this presentation, because each of these departments are integral to this ERP system. Things will be led off by our IT Director, Jose Calderon, and also will include our Finance Director, Paul Chung, and then finally Rebecca. We'll ask Rebecca to come back up as part of the, as our HR Director, to have her input in on this item. Jose?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. We have a brief presentation for you today, in addition to myself, Paul, and Rebecca speaking. We do have Chris DeRoche from Tyler Technologies, that is right over here, and Mike Monroe from Cola Hills, which is, we're presenting to you today as our project management solution. So they're available to answer any questions on the Enterprise Resource Planning solution that we're going to discuss here. I'm going to start briefly with what is ERP? ERP is a term we're going to be hearing quite a bit over the next nine slides, Enterprise Resource Planning, and that's a software application that really does everything for HR and finance. When we think about payroll, W2s, accounts payable, accounts receivable, HR staffing, and the profiles that an employee within the city has, all of that is kept in an ERP system, regardless if we're working for the city of El Segundo, city of Hawthorne, they all have an ERP system. ERP, it doesn't get more important than ERP in an organization in public sector than an ERP system. It is the largest and most complex software application deployment that we can undertake, bigger than email. It's the biggest, and because it encompasses finance and HR and critical services such as payroll, W2s, it's, it's a very important system. And it enables organizational efficiency. We're only as efficient as the software allows us to be, and, you know, we want to be on the latest and greatest application. So if we can go to the two slides, one more. I'd like to talk briefly about our existing ERP solution. Many of you know that our existing ERP solution is called Tyler Eden, and it was deployed back in 1997. And we have been using this software system for close to 30 years, and that is a screenshot of Tyler Eden itself. That is the dashboard that all employees here, when they use the system, that they're presented with that, and that's what they use to navigate throughout their, their roles and use of Eden. The tool is no longer going to be supported after March 1st, 2027. End-of-life is what we call this. Software developers, it's very typical for them to no longer support a software application after a certain amount of time. We're coming up on 30 years. I like to, the analogy that I was thinking of is, if software developers didn't do this, we'd still be on Windows 95, right? Or we're a long way from that, or in this case, we'd be on Windows 97. So it's time to replace the ERP system, and that is what this end-of-life software event is what caused us to look for a replacement solution. How do we get to select Tyler Enterprise ERP, which is the name of the tool itself? We've been evaluating options since May 2023, and since that time, we've had several onsite demonstrations and several remote demonstrations. During this time, we've had an interim CFO, David Kane, and we also have a permanent CFO, Paul. Paul's been here now for six months. During that time, both times during the interim and our permanent CFO, Tyler came onsite both times, demoed the solution, and both the interim and our now-permanent CFO met with their respective teams to confirm that, hey, I think this works for us, do you think this works for us? And we also presented to the HR Director several times during this process. Additionally, we also presented to the Finance Committee, and we provided them with our input as far as the direction of our intent to move forward with Tyler Enterprise ERP. And we also did present a receive and file memo to city council, maybe two months ago, three months ago, I can't recall the exact date, but entering, and in that memo, we did indicate that we were going to be presenting Tyler at a future date. So I'm going to hand it off to Paul to talk about the cost, and take it from there.
Thank you, Jose. So regards to costs, council...
So regards to costs, Council, this table that I presented in the staff report as well covers five years. And so, of course, the first two years is the implementation phase of Tyler. It's broken up between Tyler Technologies, Coa Hills, which is the project manager services, and then some temporary staffing needs that we are expecting for implementation. So first year implementation, we're looking at a little less than half a million dollars on the Tyler side. That includes the implementation services cost of 280. And then an annual maintenance cost, that's just the annual cost of having the system in place, $255,000. And then they will also credit us with our current system, prorating us for the six months or so that we will be using Tyler and Eden at the same time. And so that's half a million dollars. And then Coa services for the project manager services for two years is $240,000. But of course, the first year, depending upon how many hours we utilize, we're just estimating half of that, 120,000. And then 50,000 for temporary employees. So you're looking at first year, $665,000. Second year, 704,000. And then post implementation, it's just goes straight back into Tyler's contract of the subsequent years for the annual maintenance, which year three will just remain at 255,000. But there is a CPI factor that's max at 5% for year four and into year, year four and year five. So total cost for the project for the five years is approximately 2.1 million dollars or 2.2 if we round up. Go to the next slide. Regards to finance, as Jose mentioned, this is a big overhaul for us. Eden is a system that I've come to acclimate to in the past six months. But it's a system that it seems that five of our staff actually have used Tyler come from other agencies that have used Tyler from their previous employer. So we have that benefit of them using the system. But also Tyler provides what they call Tyler Contact Manager. It's a workflow system. Currently, just an example is an invoice. If we have three different departments that need to sign off on an invoice, we manually carry this invoice to a department. And then sometimes it'll go to the yards and it'll go there. And eventually it'll come back to finance. We'll enter that in our Eden system. And then, of course, we'll process the check and and pay the invoice. Now, regards to Eden or with Tyler Enterprise, it will be you scan the document, it digitizes, we enter the information, the payment, and the workflow will begin. We'll go to the department head or the supervisor, they'll go ahead and sign off on that. And then you'll get, you'll immediately move to finance. Finance will get that information with the attachment. We go ahead and review it, approve it, and then it will be processed. So that process, of course, is seamless. It works. It's it, I've used it when I was at Santa Monica. And I was part of that implementation team as well. And the system is used, from what I'm hearing, statistics wise, 80% of the agencies here in California uses this system. So there is a real big benefit. I've actually reached out to Manhattan Beach, which implemented their Tyler Enterprise system during COVID. And her and I had a good, long discussion regards to what worked, what didn't. What can we prevent from happening here so that we can do a good integration? So we've, I've had this various conversation, not only with Manhattan Beach, but with Beverly Hills and Santa Monica as well. Just prepping myself with and my team. Just regards to the TCM module, the Tyler Contact Manager, there's there's just cash receipts that gets, from what we do currently, just a lot of paper. This would definitely digitize a lot of that and go away from paper. I'm looking forward to that. Regards to their hub platform, this is where I get a little more excited. I think department heads too, where you go into your hub for your department, you'll see that data right there. You'll see expenditures, you can kind of see overtime really quickly. You don't have to print a report where even currently you have to. There's various other, just tracking of bar graphs, pie graphs, of course, that's something I get excited for, but not all department heads. But it gives you real data. And that's really just modernizing our ERP system. And lastly, just utilities, a module, that's more of a public facing module that'll be implemented in the next two years or so, kind of towards the end of the module, where utility billing will be public facing. All the residents and the commercial businesses that are paying their bills, they'll be able to hopefully see with smart metering their kind of current usage. And so that will, all information will be on an easy user interface for Tyler Munis as we implement that. Next slide, please. Regards to project management, we have Coa Hills here. I've met with Jose and Rebecca. We actually met three different vendors. And we went through the process regards to project management. Do we really need a project manager? Two, how would we benefit from having a project manager? And really came down to how has project manager that's worked on Eden to Tyler Munis or Tyler Enterprise ERP, what could they provide us? And really came down to these various items. They're going to provide us, they're going to be the middle person between the city and Tyler. And they will provide us project management and monitoring, making sure reporting, making sure Tyler project managers on their side. Because they're going to be focusing on just implementation. But our project manager is going to be focused on our city and representing the city, making sure they tie that knot and making sure the progress is moving forward and signing off on the various process of implementation. Another area that I get excited for from Coa Hills is just the training module, the the user interface side of things where they'll be able to draft a document for us so that city employees can use to train. And also new employees that come into the organization could use that so that there's less handholding. This document will be pivotal for just getting them on board using the new system. And just overall, just tracking and making sure we're on budget and making sure the project is moving forward so that we can finish this project in two years. And that's why I feel that we do need a project manager here. With that said, I mean, we'll turn it over to HR.
So I have experience with Tyler Munis. At my prior agency, we implemented it. I was part of the implementation team. It took 18 months for us to go through payroll, HR and utility billing. And it's it's a very significant project. I feel that it's essential for us to bring on a project manager to help us stay on track. And from a human resources perspective, another benefit of having a project manager is that they serve as an impartial third party. They're they're in the best interest of how the system is going to work and the efficiencies and the workflow. Sometimes employees are resistant to change. And when we have a project manager, that person can help assist employees who are struggling with the changes. They're going to be performing the same duties, but it just might look a little bit differently. And at the end of the day, staff is going to remain here. And the project manager, when the project is completed, they're going to go away. So the project manager from HR perspective really helps preserve internal relationships. And then in terms of Tyler itself, some of the features that are really great for human resources, the Tyler Hub is great. It's a snapshot, you can customize it. You can see the the areas in the reports that you most pull. But it converts a lot of manual processes. As Paul had mentioned, how we stamp the invoices and sign them and then route them for hard signatures. There is a workflow process where literally the bill gets scanned and it gets approved electronically. For employees, the PAFs will be into Tyler instead of us typing in Adobe PDF, printing it, signing it, and then scanning it and sending it to payroll to process.
Is that a personnel action form?
Yes, personnel action form. And another thing that is automated, that we don't do automated right now, is if you want to take a day off and you want to fill out a leave request for your supervisor to sign, you can also do that in Tyler as well. The other thing that is really exciting for me that right now, I really love metrics and analytics. And right now, to maintain metrics and analytics, it's it's a manual process. It's creating spreadsheets. It's making sure that someone updates the spreadsheet to track the numbers of, you know, all of the things that we do in HR. And with this, you know, there's a lot of work upfront. But at the end, it's it's great because you can pull so many things that you can't right now, that you have to do all by hand. The other thing is that some of the systems that the city already has, like NeoGov and Telestaff, there are import capabilities into Tyler. So that will assist us as well.
Last speaker here is going to be Chris DeRoche from Tyler.
Good evening, all. Thank you for a few moments of your time. As Jose mentioned, my name is Chris DeRoche and I'm with Tyler Technologies. The list that you are seeing up here on the screen is the list of agencies, cities, counties, school districts, authorities that have chosen Tyler over the years as their as their next ERP solution. Really, within this list, there's there's two. There's those that are in black, which were other cities and counties that utilized a a different third-party solution as their ERP and wanted something new. The ones that are in red were the cities and counties that utilized Eden. So they had a relationship with Tyler. They were looking to replace their ERP solution and chose to stick with us, upgrading to the Enterprise ERP system that Jose and his team here are presenting to you all this evening. So this would be the list of folks that you could also leverage only through the implementation process, but in the years to come after, on how they have been utilizing the system and making it work for them, taking advantage of new features and new functionalities and how they roll that out. What we're going to do next is just bring up a quick look at Tyler's Enterprise ERP solution. So what you will remember is the screenshot that Jose brought up of what Eden currently looks like. This system is a fully web-based, cloud-hosted, modern UI that the city is looking to move to. Needs IT help, yes. All right. So this here is Tyler Hub. This is going to be the main dashboard that every user is going to access in the morning when they start their day. This is the, an out-of-the-box look at what a hub page can provide for each user. Now, this user that I'm logged in here has access to look at everything across the board from financials, revenue, HR, content manager, system admin capabilities. But what can also be leveraged here during the implementation process is the building of specific pages, taking the cards that pull data that's being processed within the system on a on a day-to-day basis and bringing it to the forefront so that analytical decisions can be made and can be viewed without having to dive into the menu, without having to run reports that then become static, that don't update automatically. These cards get updated as soon as information is processed so that you can have it at your forefront, being able to make important decisions. Now, Jose, if you click on the Human Capital Management page real quick, this one is going to focus more on HR data. This might be a page that Rebecca has set up. She can see headcounts throughout different departments. She can look at overtime as it's tracked across the city. She can also manage open positions, as you'll see in that card up in the top right-hand corner. That's going to give a rundown of all the open positions that the city might be currently hiring for, what the total FTE count is, what the max employee count is, and other specific data and information that's related to the recruiting process. Now, Jose, if you'll go back to the prior page and go to the revenue page up there in the top left. Lastly, just want to quickly point out another page that's going to be dedicated more towards the utility billing side of the house. What this is going to show, maybe your revenue manager, is a look at all outstanding revenues that are owed, that are owed to the city. And down the left-hand side, I have cards that are built here sort of in a stoplight effect. Green, that means good, that's okay. But if you get down towards the bottom, yellow, red, or orange and red, those are going to be the bills that are due, you know, 60 days old, 90 days old, 120 days old. Clicking right into that tile is going to bring you a list of all those bills and allow you to figure out what you want to do next. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to the Council if there are any questions about anything that we have presented here today.
Stay close by.
No questions. I got a couple. Does Eden have an LMS? I know we have a PMO that's going to do the training for us, but does Eden also have an LMS system?
Eden does not have, Eden, our existing system, does not have an LMS system.
The new one?
Tyler Enterprise ERP is is not an LMS system.
Does not have an LMS module that they have available?
We use, I'll let you speak.
We use NOBE4 right now for our LMS system. But the one thing that Tyler does have is you can put all of the training in there and you can run reports on who's delinquent on, you know, what are the trains they need to? Yes.
Assessments as well?
Yes.
Okay. So when when you price this out, what in the suite of modules that Tyler has available are we not getting? Is there anything that we're not getting in this pricing?
One item that I'm excited to, us going with Tyler Enterprise ERP and what's not included, what I'm going to call a phase one, is Tyler's Open Finance Module. Open Finance Module, right? So that's a transparency tool that will allow the city to present metrics to the public. An open data.
Like Open Gov, basically?
Kind of like, yeah, yes. And that's something that we will come back, once the system is fully online, to present. That's not something that we'd want to pay for now. So open finance is not something that is included in the existing quote.
Okay, so I'm just curious if there are other modules, though. Maybe this is a question for the Tyler rep that we're not getting through this pricing that would be available in the suite.
Yeah, so I'll just say that everything that the existing Eden system does and anything that we need based off what was scoped through Tyler's onsite visits is included. So there's nothing that we're going to need to know, that we're aware of today, that the system will not do.
I would just say to add to that, when we were here last year to do the onsite presentations, we covered all the modules that are currently available within the financial suite, the HR payroll suite, and the, really in the utility billing suite, which is what the city is looking at utilizing today. From there, you know, worked with Jose and Paul to kind of remove a couple of modules that didn't really make sense, that weren't things that the city needed at this time. And so what is being presented is really what is sort of replacing what is currently being utilized in Eden, plus a few additional items that that functionality doesn't really exist in Eden today, but is available in Enterprise ERP.
So two years down the line, everyone's on boarded, implementation's moved. Are there other modules available, but we would pay for those?
I'm sorry, what was that?
If we were going to turn on other modules in the future, we'd pay for those.
You would have to purchase those.
So when I think of HR, you have payroll. Is there time and attendance? Sounds like there's an employee self-service component. Time and attendance is built in as well, fully integrated with payroll?
Yep.
And what about like performance management and bench and succession planning? Is that in here?
That is all part of, that's.
Corrective actions in here?
Recreation of park scheduling? No, that's 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 a glaring weakness. That's not included?
That was not a module that we we included in this.
So I believe that's still, is that still manual?
No, it's a carnival of low.
Yeah, I mean, the personal experience, having rolled out programs like this, a big five consultant, but also as a as a client of Paylocity and other products that are similar. The wage and hour implications are very serious in the state of California, if not done right, with hourly employees in particular, like incredibly onerous, as you know, POG, everything else. So I agree with Mayor, but at the time, if we don't have anything in there that's better than we currently have for the hourly payroll, we should probably take a look at the time and attendance side because compliance is key. Are they getting their meal period within the fifth and sixth hour? Probably not. I'm just saying, like, there's very specific requirements in California that make it incredibly difficult to do for business that we should be looking into. My, I just want to make sure we're getting a really good value here. And the reason, I've never had an issue with ERP all along, since 2016, like, we need to do an ERP. My whole thing has been about, you know, are we going to market? No, we didn't. We use an RFP from an existing city in Manife. But then I just want to be convinced that we're getting the best pricing. And when you don't go out to bid, typically you don't get the best pricing. So one of the things I asked in one of our one-on-ones is, have we gone back and asked them to sharpen the pencil on the pricing? I don't know if we have, but I don't think you guys had to exert much effort to win the business because we made it pretty easy for you, frankly. And you guys are good, obviously, you have all these other clients. But I wonder if there's some room in the pricing or if you guys discuss that or not.
Mayor, we did, what I did was I looked at Manife's because we were piggybacking off of Manife's and see how much they're charging. So the pricing was, we were about $5,000 more than Manife. Manife executed their contract about a year ago. So and the way they, the way Tyler bills is you're in a tier system. We're on a tier two, which is they look at the budget, overall city's budget. Kind of gives you an idea of FTEs, how many employees are probably going to be utilizing this software. And they base their prices on that. So there's. So there's really no big wiggle room regards to costing and pricing. They just looked at how much your budget is. And then when I looked at Manife and compared that, our budget size is slightly bigger than Manife, so I felt that pricing-wise, it was close to what we were...
Manife went to an RFP to get a tiered pricing model?
I don't...
It had to have been a competitive bid. They just were slotted into an algorithm?
They went through a competitive bid process. And the way Tyler does their costing for their services is you have a tier one, tier two, tier three kind of approach regards to where do you land on your software uses? And theirs was a tier two.
Well, plus 30% because that's... They got to pay for him. Right? He's to say, that's the cost of sales, 30% on software. So they got to pay for him, but we didn't... They didn't even have to use him for us. They used him for Manife, right?
Well, you're overlooking where they came and rolled out the presentation and they explained how things work and they took time with staff. I mean, this is not like, we just did exactly what Manife did. This is...
I'm pretty sure we did exactly what Manife did.
No, we used their response to their public bid process to piggyback, just like we did with the tree trimming contract we have on here. So this is not anything unusual.
No doubt there was an autocomplete on the slide, or the find and replace that they fully executed in the sales process. So replace Manife with El Segundo.
The question that I heard from the mayor is, are we getting the best value? And as described in the staff report, and Paul, I'm hoping you can speak to it more off the top of your head, we are in line with other pricing. I think you mentioned in the staff report, Manhattan Beach, you give very specific examples in the staff report, so I don't know if you have it off the top of your head or not, but the arm wrestling that is in these type of negotiations, we are in line with what Tyler charges other agencies.
With all due respect, I've never... And I don't usually use the words always and never. I've never been in a situation, when I'm purchasing software, where I haven't been able to get a better price than what they initially came with because it's all margin in software. That's the reality. So I'm not trying to beat anyone up on staff. I just want to make truly, we're getting... We're talking about a lot of money. It's $2 million over five years. This is not chump change. This is a lot of money, $400,000 a year for us and a 10% reduction, 5% reduction, that's a police officer. So I'm just wanting to make sure we're getting the best deal possible. And that's... I've been very clear and transparent with you guys all along. I haven't wavered at all. I think it's a great product. My only challenge has been that we're not... I'm not convinced we're getting the best pricing. That's it.
In years six and seven and eight, considering the last one we held for 30 years, are we just getting cost plus CPI? They said the pricing stays the same, just plus the CPI, the max of five. So if we're at year six or year seven?
Well, we don't... Our pricing is looked at and when it's reviewed, we don't take into account CPI. You know, we look at the cost of doing business for Tyler to determine what, and if any, there will be an increase across annual maintenance for all of our customers. Generally, in the past, what we have seen is it's gone up anywhere between 3% and 5%. And so that's generally been the increase that I have seen over the last several years for the annual maintenance, whether it's an on-premise site or it's a cloud-hosted site.
And that starts in year six?
That would start in year six, yeah. For years four and five, it's been capped at no more than 5%.
And if there's a major structural update, do you have a fee change for that? Is that out of contracts up in year six? If there's... If the Tyler Suite has been replaced by Tyler Suite Ultra, do we automatically update into that or do we have to re-bid?
That would be, you know, up to the city on how you would like to approach that. But the...
That's not currently within the contract, though, about major system updates or automatic updates?
Automatic updates are all... Are going to be handled, you know, are going to be handled by Tyler. Now, if you're looking to change up the ERP system that you're using, that would be a completely different conversation. But as of right now, Tyler puts in about $20 to $25 million annually just for research and development for Enterprise ERP. So it's not going anywhere anytime soon. It's going to be here for the foreseeable future, and this is going to be our flagship ERP system for a very long time.
And do we have termination for convenience or is it... What's our termination setup for this? So if there's a massively, you know, massive improvement in the technology around this three years from now, we can walk away from it?
Yes, there is language in there that we have... But that was a margin that the city of Tyler was specific on, we need to make sure to include that in our negotiation.
Is the project manager... Would the project manager be liable for any slips to the implementation schedule? So if we're in month 26 of implementing and the project manager's still hanging out, who buys that bomb?
Are you referring to from Tyler's side?
No, that's from the Coa side, I think. So this is a...
Well, it's incumbent upon us to... I'm Mike Monroe, by the way, founder of Coa Hills Consulting, CEO, and I appreciate you having us here tonight. Yeah, these projects, we do 20 to 30 of these a year organizationally, and we're on time, on budget, and on task. And that's... It's a lift-and-shift every 20 to 30 years. It's a major project. And your concern about, that you've brought up, are all really valid. I agree with them. You want to make sure that you can leave if there's cause. We're very convinced that this is a good move for the city. We would definitely put more resources on things if we start to have project slippage. We would let you know ahead of time that there's project slippage. There's never going to be a mystery as to why that slippage is happening. It's going to be well-known and well-seen by the folks here. We aren't... There's no drama on our projects. We make sure that things track to budget. And the city of Oakley, who we just took live, city of Laramie, Wyoming, both those cities just went live recently, on budget, on time, and on task. And that's a CEO, our promise to get you there. Is there a clause in there that you can claw back money from us if you are late on your project? No, there isn't. But is there a promise that we'll add more resources if you start to fall behind, if you have issues that are within our control collectively? Yes, we would do that.
What's our commitment in terms of resourcing availability for your firm?
Yeah, so the client-side commitment is usually, it depends on the aspect, because there are many aspects to the project, right? So on the project management side, we're providing a quarter-time project manager, which is about standard for this type of implementation. We have quarter time, which is about 10 to 15 hours a week, depending on the week. We would anticipate that your staff would have, during the implementation, a four or five-to-one ratio on hours to ours. It depends on the phase of the project. For instance, you might have a kickoff meeting that has eight people on your side and one on ours, or two on ours, and Tyler's. We are the advocates for the project and for the city. We're not advocates for Coa Hills. We're not advocates for Tyler. We're advocates for the project first and the city is next in line. Why the project first? Because that's what you hired us to do, is the scope of that project. So we're dogged in making sure that those benchmarks are met, and we're dogged in reporting early if there's ever any kind of variance on that.
Last question for the Eden team. Does this... Do we have licenses for a mobile interface for this?
As far as using the Enterprise application on a mobile device?
That's right.
Yep. So because this is completely web-based solution, you can use it on any mobile device. You can use it on an iPad. You could pull it up on a cell phone if you'd like to.
Does it have the... Does it... Is it formulated for mobile specifically? Or is it just a web interface? Okay, there's a mobile interface for it.
It does render down to the size of the screen that you are utilizing.
And I want Michael to be able to permit from home on Saturdays when I call him desperately.
That could be done.
Very exciting. No further questions, thank you.
Because we are now moving to a cloud-based system versus a current system, which is hard local. You know, from a hacking perspective, does this bring up additional issues of security and especially if it's on people's phones? What are we going to do to ensure that that... That the system becomes as secure as possible?
So the IT department is currently working on a two-factor authentication rollout for next year. And similar to how you all log into Gmail or your bank and you get a text message, everyone here in the city with an email account is going to have either a token where they have to punch in a seven-digit code, or an app on your phone that says, hey, what's the code? And that's going to provide that double layer of security.
And so there's no other additional software we need from an IT, from a security perspective that we need to...
That's correct. No, this two-factor authentication project is one that we've already been working on for quite some time, and it's actually a CEGIS requirement for the police department to have in place by October 1st. So the police department, we're being mandated to implement that by October 1st. I want to take the rest of the city with us to avoid any sort of phishing or ransomware attacks. It's really critical.
And then the second question, so, you know, for a project like this to be successful, it's important that every department puts their best and brightest on the team to ensure that, and they're focused. So every team has committed to providing their best and brightest to this project and then backfilling with consult... Or temp help consultants to do the day-to-day. But we are... Every department's aligned, and that's going to be who's... Who in our team is going to be ensuring that each of those departments are continuing to giving the resource needed to ensure that this project completes on time into budget?
So we have... The city manager and during our executive team meetings, Enterprise ERP has been a topic for close to a year now. That will be a discussion once hopefully this is approved, and we're going to form those subject matter experts and liaisons per department shortly after.
And we're going to keep to as vanilla as possible?
Out of the box, as much as possible, 100%.
Okay, any further questions? All right, we have a couple... Oh, thank you, thanks. We have a couple items here. One is exempt the city's formal bidding requirements pursuant to El Segundo Municipal Code 1798, 179C, and award a contract to Tyler Technologies and authorize the city manager to execute a five-year software license agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide enterprise resource planning, implementation services, and licenses totaling $1.000, well, $1,874,544 over the course of the contract. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Okay, first stick with the first. Do we have a second?
Baldino seconds.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's two ayes.
Aye.
Oh, three. Oh, three ayes. Okay, all those opposed?
No.
No. Three, two. Item one, authorize the city manager to execute a two-year professional services agreement with Coa Hills Consulting to provide project management for enterprise resource planning services totaling $240,000 pursuant to El Segundo Municipal Code Chapter 1-7A. Would someone like to move approval?
Baldino moves.
Persick second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was everybody, right?
Yep.
Yep, five zero. You got that? Adam Clark? Thank you. All right, we're on to... Did we cover everything? I think we did. Report, City Treasurer.
Oh, we got number 20.
Oh, number 20. Pesky 20. Oh, that's an important one. Sorry. Whoops. All right, 20 measures, C. Sales Tax Implementation, our CFO, Mr. Chung is up here to present. Sir.
All right, let me... I do have a short presentation for you as well.
While he's doing that, I'll welcome our guest from the school district, Jason Johnson, new superintendent. Thanks for being here.
It's customary for new superintendents to sing a song.
I was hoping you'd ask.
Maybe later, maybe later.
Yeah, yeah. Mix it up between all these finance reports, it'll be nice.
Thanks, Jose. Yeah, yeah, it works. It's working, yeah. It's just, it's kind of cut off though.
I got the shot.
Session, Measure C Sales Tax Implementation, our CFO, Mr. Chung is here to present.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. Sorry for the technical glitch there. I do have a short presentation for you on this item. The item before you really is for the various resolutions and the additional documentations that the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, also known as CD TFA, they used to be called the Board of Equalization, but now they're called CD TFA. They require these various documents in order to implement Measure C. And Measure C is this quarter cent sales tax that, three-quarter sales tax that will be implemented. And I'll go into the specifics of that. As you're aware, the voter-approved El Segundo ballot Measure C was approved by the voters April 10th of 2018. And the ballot read, shall the measure authorizing a three-quarter cent transaction and use tax, also known as sales tax, which shall be imposed by the city when a county sales tax measure has qualified for a ballot and may continue to be imposed only if receives voter approval to fund general municipal services, for example, police and fire services, senior citizen services, recreation services, and street maintenance, to be adopted. And so this, as you know, was approved close to 85% of the voters. And really, this was a preemptive move to just really secure our portion of El Segundo's sales tax so that the county, if they were to put a measure, which they have, was to protect that portion of it. And on June 18th of 2024, LA County did put in new measure for a homeless measure called the Affordable Housing Homelessness Solutions and Prevention Now Measure, which would be on the ballot on the November 5th elections. And this really meant that they were going to go ahead and repeal Measure H, which is currently the homeless measure, the quarter cents, and implement this new measure, if pass, if it passes, of the 50 or 0.50%, 50 cents to a dollar measure in lieu of Measure H. And so let me go into kind of the specifics of how the sales tax will look like in El Segundo. Currently, El Segundo's sales tax is at 9.5%. And that's broken into, the 6% goes to the state of California, the quarter cent is the current Measure H. And then the county local tax, or we call it Bradley Burns 1%, that's the portion that the city collects. And then the remaining 2.25% is the special tax. Those are the transportation taxes that we pay for sales tax, and that gets you to the 9.5%. Now, if Measure C was to be in place plus the homeless measure passes, El Segundo's sales tax will increase to 10.5%. And to just break that down for you, California state will remain at 6%. But the new homeless measure will repeal Measure H and go into effect and be 0.5%. The Bradley Burns will remain at 1%. And then the special district tax will remain at 2.25%. But El Segundo will collect that quarter cents, a three-quarter cents sales tax to bring us up to 10.5. Now, the state of California had a maximum of 10.25% sales tax. But AB Assembly Bill 1679 that was passed last year, that allowed that to increase to 10.5%. And that's why we were able to go from 10.25 to 10.5. And the reason I circled and read these three items is because before AB 1679, the max was 2%, but this new Assembly Bill allowed the increase to 2.25%, which we combined those three circled items, that gets us to that new 2.25% in total. 10.5% will be the sales tax if both the Measure C gets implemented and the homeless measure gets passed in November. And so let me just walk you through kind of the implications of Measure C. Measure C will bring in an estimated $9 million in additional sales tax revenue. This will bring our annual sales tax to a total of $25 million, bless you. And that will, of course, bring our sales tax as the highest general fund revenue source for the city. There is a cost to this process. It's $175,000 that CD TFA does charge cities. This is a one-time fee that they charge. Whether the measure, the homeless measure passes or not, CD TFA will charge the city $175,000 to implement. It takes them 110 days to implement as well. And lastly, Measure C analysis, we are asking, staff is asking for council to approve an amendment to HDL, our hinder letter, the LAMSSS contract. They're our consultant that reviews sales tax for us. And being that Measure C is new, we do want them to continue analyzing Measure C sales tax, but also audit it as well moving forward. Regards to the timeline, it gets a little convoluted, so I wanted to walk the council through this implementation process. So starting from the left top, Measure C was approved April 10th, 2018. Tonight, city council will, if approved, will implement Measure C. And then come November 5th, the elections, if it passes, if the homeless measure passes, then on January 1st of 2025, El Segundo's sales tax will be at 10.25. And then come April 1st, 2025, that's when the homeless measure will kick in. And that will bring our total sales tax to 10.5%. Now, if we go back to the November 5th election and if the homeless measure does not pass and it fails, then come January 1st of 2025, due to timing, we will still collect and the sales tax will go up to 10.25 for three months. And then CD TFA will go ahead and revert us back, being that the homeless measure did not pass, and Measure C will go away. And in April 1st of 2025, we will go back to our 9.5 sales tax rate. With that said, there's three recommendations for you to consider tonight, council. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Do you have a general estimate of the monetary value of that three-month period, assuming that it doesn't pass and we get that basis points for a period of time?
Yeah, so being that 9 million is kind of the approximate number that we'll collect for the whole year, divide that by four, we'll get close to 2.2 million dollars.
We'd still be ahead financially with the $175,000 outlay.
There will still be an offset for those three months, yes.
I just have one question. So if it doesn't pass and then it reverts back, there's no issue of us collecting the money, the additional percentage?
No.
For those three months?
No.
There's nothing that we have to pay back or do something different?
No, and we wanted to make sure too, and so our ordinance does read that those three months, we do collect that and we don't need to return that money.
Any further questions or comments?
Measure C was sold to the people of El Segundo on the basis that we had very little faith that the county would use their tax dollars wisely. And if they increased to the maximum rate of 10 and a quarter, that by passing Measure C, we would recoup that money to residents by keeping it in El Segundo. Lot of communities followed us and clearly, by not noticing 1679, they changed the rules of the game on us. And we have now fallen into a position where instead of insulating people from profligate county government, we're now doubly penalizing them. I would be far more in favor of us putting a ballot measure on to repeal Measure C than I would be continuing the process to collect Measure C. Because right now, those 81% of the people thought they were protecting themselves from an undue sales tax increase. And now, they're facing a massive sales tax increase. And we are punishing them for putting their trust in us. So I would far more be in favor of going to them to repeal C and urge them to vote against A, which I have very little faith will do anything to address unsheltered homelessness.
That's a good point, Mayor Protem. I hadn't thought about it from that perspective. What are the, what's A polling at right now? Anyway, I'm just curious. Not very good, right?
I saw a poll this weekend, it's just under 50% right now. So it's going to be close.
So, question for you. One of the things I think that's missing here is that if we don't put, if we choose not to put in our three-quarters percent and the ballot measure passes, the new sales tax in El Segundo will go from 9.5 to 9.75.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, so that's the delta that we're talking about there. So, am I also correct in saying that if we do not activate this right now, we lose it forever?
No.
No?
It would just, it would suspend it if you didn't want to collect it. If the county's measure passes, the city's entitled to take that percentage, but you would suspend it, but the county wouldn't be able to go in and grab it later.
Okay, so we could technically, because I think what we were looking at.
Well, I say that as long as the city, if the county passed one, the city would need to then put it back and, you know, to unsuspend the tax to make sure the county didn't take it.
Because I understand what you're saying on this. Because in the end, what we were thinking was is that the county was going to put on a sales tax. And what they did is they hit it within Measure, homeless affordable housing, which... So here's my question then. If we did go ahead and implement it right now and said, okay, because again, 84% of the voters voted for this, but again, the game has changed on us a little bit. If we implemented it and we put it on for a few months and it didn't pass, do we have the ability then to sit there and say, okay, we're going to bring it back to nine and a half and just suspend that, but we have it in place in case something like this happens again? Or would we even need to go to that measure, to that length?
You said if it didn't pass?
Yeah, meaning that in the end, we put it in place, so on January 1st, boom, we're collecting the three-quarter percent, right?
But the county measure didn't pass?
Then it doesn't pass.
Then that, then what would happen at that point is the city wouldn't be able to collect it beyond that first quarter. But if the county in the future, it was written such that if county does it again, your Measure C would still be there. So it would always be sort of a block, if you will, or we get triggered by a county tax.
I just want to make sure that we're not losing the ability to do it, especially since we had such an overwhelming amount of people that vote for it. So that's my, I'm torn on this because I get completely what Mayor Protem is talking about. But at the same time, you did have a ballot measure on this that passed. But going from 9.75 to 10, 10 and a half is a lot. So I know, again, we're a business-friendly city. You can make the argument that, oh, well, people from outside are the ones who pay for that tax. But that's not necessarily true, because restaurants, you have a restaurant you go to, all that stuff, that's all part of it. So that's not entirely true. So I'm a little bit torn on this one. I'm trying to figure out, how do we not keep that card in our pocket to be able to use at a later date if needed? I just want to make sure we're not losing it.
I think he's saying we have that ability going forward.
Right.
That we could execute. It's just that they kind of pulled a fast one on us in the sense that Chris's point, they saw what was coming down the pike, all these cities reacting it with these retroactive measures or proactive measures, whatever you're going to call it, I can't remember which. But anyway, and then they put in mechanisms so that the whole basis goes up. Like, I can't even believe we're considering, did you say 10.5? That's absurd. I mean, it's never going backwards, ever. Ever going backwards. Yeah, I think, so then if, what could happen in the future, Mark or Paul, where they would implement another sales tax measure that would not create the same situation where the basis goes up and then we go up on top of that?
They would need, they would need the state to increase the cap again. Because that's essentially what happened during the last year, is the state government increased the cap, which allowed them to take it up higher. So they would need the state to do that.
So the maximum tax right now is 10 and a quarter or 10 and a half?
10.5.
So right now it's 10.5?
Yes.
So other municipalities who have that tax already in place, they don't go to 10.75?
No.
So they already grabbed, they already grabbed it?
They're, yes.
So this quarter percent is not going to pertain to those?
Yeah, they're, everyone's going to be at the 10.5.
I think there were like 60 or 70 cities in the county that are already, they already took that amount of money. So most cities in the county are going to be at that 10.5 if this county measure passes.
I get that nobody wants to raise taxes and no one wants to pay higher taxes. But this issue comes down to, if we're going to have to pay taxes, that money should stay in town. And I think that's what the voters voted on, is we know the county's going to come back and ask for more money for some program, and it's going to pass. So when that happens, that's why we have Measure C that says, if they do that, then we're going to start collecting that money. And if that ballot, if that measure doesn't pass, we're stopped collecting that money and our tax will go back down. But if this doesn't pass, the next one they put up there will probably pass, the next one after that. And I think it's just a matter of time before someone else from the county, or who knows, is going to come and take our local dollars and take them out of our community. And so I voted for this. I believe it's, it's... It is a higher tax, but that's going to happen eventually. And we got to do what we have to do to, one, implement the will of the people who voted on this. And two, make sure that to the extent we can, we keep this money local. You know, we've got a lot of unfunded projects. We've got a lot of problems. I know there's a lot of problems in the county, but if we're going to pay the tax in this town, that money should stay and we should adopt this.
But Measure C was supposed to be taking money instead of, and now it's taking money and?
Yeah, you can't change that.
We can if we put a measure on the ballot and to repeal Measure C.
You don't have to repeal.
Is it too late?
You don't, yeah, well, you don't have to repeal it. You can just suspend it. You also don't have to impose the entire amount. I mean, it's... But that's, you know, it's a policy call.
I would be far more apt to suspend it. What does it take to suspend it? Just an act to the council?
Well, if you don't pass these resolutions tonight, you'll essentially be suspending it. But I also would want, if the council was going to do that, I think it would be a wise idea to actually pass a resolution specifically saying you're suspending it so that it wouldn't be argued later that you're waiving the right to collect it at some point in the future. Because you can suspend the imposition of a fee or a tax, but I would recommend you do that formally.
Because again, instead of insulating people from an undue sales tax, we're just spiking the football. Saying, oh, I'll show you. I'll do three times what the tax you're getting from the county is.
Right, the tax is higher, but those dollars stay local.
Well, yeah, we could just tax people anyway and have the dollars stay local. I think that's a bad idea too.
But that's what people voted on, Chris.
Yeah, that's, no, that is, the intent, the intent that we sold them on in 2018 was to insulate them from an undue use of their funds by the county. Instead of, well, the county's going to take your money and then we're going to use that as an excuse to also take some more of it. That's not, so they definitively did not vote to be like, oh, we'd like to raise our own sales tax. They'd want to be like, yeah, that guy's going to take my sales tax. I'd rather you hold on to it for me. That's what they, that's what they were, that's the bill of goods they were sold. And now we're changing the game on them if we just take it as an "and" instead of an "instead of." So I would move to suspend collection of this.
I'll second that and then we'll go to further commentary.
Well, tonight, what you have in front of you is whether to take it. Again, if you're going to do, if you want to suspend it, I would recommend to come back at a future meeting with an actual resolution to suspend it formally. Tonight, what we're doing is, or what's before you is so that the state will start collecting it. It's the process to get them to do that. And that's what's in front of you this evening.
So, so one of the things that Mark had mentioned also is that we don't have to collect the whole thing. So maybe there's a portion of the tax that we could put it in its tiered, you know? So if, you know, say we'll collect a portion of it and then if it does pass, we can, we can actually then implement the second piece, the second tier of it, so...
What you would be doing in that case, you'd only be suspending the imposition of a part of it. So you would be directing the state to collect a part of it and you would be suspending the imposition of a part of it.
Yeah.
I was also informed...
And does that double the cost of it? Is it 175 times two then?
Well, I was informed by CD TFA, we did ask that question. If council was to lower the amount from the three-quarters to, let's say, half, 50 cents to a dollar, they said that you could do that, but if you were to increase it back another quarter to get back to the 75, they said you would have to go back to voters.
I don't agree with that.
That's what they told.
I don't agree with that because that's why you suspend it, so that you don't, I mean, it's already been passed. That's why you suspend it. And there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about that amongst the city attorneys about the correct way to do that. So I... that. So I, now, I just don't agree with the state on that.
No.
And I'm not aware that there's any case that says that, so.
So I, I think we have to consider that the worst-case scenario that could happen, if we did nothing, if we suspended it and it passed, the local sales tax goes from nine point five to nine point seven five. It does not go to ten, ten point five.
April first.
It's only gonna go to ten point five if we kick in our tax.
Yes.
I, I, I understand the whole playing field here. I, I tend to agree that I think the best option in this case is to, is to suspend it. Because I, I think we're, we're gouging if we don't. The, the, when, when this came up and it was voted on, it was so that, it was to protect us against the LA County grabbing that three quarter percent. And that's not what's happening here. They're grabbing a quarter, but it was, the way they did it, it's like, if we said, okay, we're gonna grab a quarter, too. Okay, now it goes from nine point seven five to ten. We're just adding on top of it. Is that kinda what we're getting there, Chris?
Okay.
Looks like we have, um, consensus to suspend. Yeah, for me, it's as simple as we told the voters one thing, and there's something different. How can we, in good faith, go forward with a different argument than we made initially? So, we should just, we have, we're, we're suspending. Anything else, city attorney?
We need to bring that back for a resolution, though, right?
Correct.
Let's do a motion and a vote, right?
Well, if somebody wants to make a motion-
Is there a motion? You can make a motion to approve, right? What's before is to just, do you wanna approve a resolution and authorize a city manager and appropriate the budget line item? So there's three items, so any one of you can make a motion, and then we'll get a second and see if it gets the votes. Yeah, I'll move approval of the, the-
Measure.
Okay, Baldino, uh, that, that's the resolution, right? And associated documents instruct California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to collect an additional point seven five percent sales tax approved by Measure C.
Let's see if the votes are there, and then I'll read the resolutions into the record.
Do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails. All right, we're back to suspend. Thank you very much. So this will come back before us again?
Uh, I'll bring something back at your next meeting, so, cause I do think it's important that this get documented as to what's occurring and that you formally suspend the imposition of the tax, so you protect the city's position.
Can we also get clarity on that issue, the concern about-
Yes.
If we, um, implement a portion of it versus suspending the whole thing?
I, I wanna talk to the state as to why they believe that's the case, but that's not, that's not-
Cause if we could do that, then at least we're capturing the, the portion of it.
Well-
Well, I mean, if you take their logic, that would mean you can't, if you suspend it at all, that you have to go back out to the voters, which doesn't make sense to me.
And we'll also find out if we have to pay another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for implementing a in- For that cost as well.
Thank, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you, staff, for putting time into this one.
No problem.
All right, uh, next up, CalPERS Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty-four Investment Performance CFO here to present.
All right, um, I just have a quick, um, presentation for you, council. Um, this is really a receiving file. This is regards to CalPERS's performance for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four's investment performance. Annually, CalPERS sends out their preliminary investment return, uh, mid-July, regards to how they perform during that fiscal year or prior fiscal year. And they reported this past, uh, July that they were able to, uh, bring in nine point three percent of their investment return. That's out of their five hundred and two point nine billion dollars of assets. So this outpaces their six point eight percent discount rate, that, that's kinda their benchmark that they wanna hit, and that's how they calculate all their unfunded liabilities for all the agencies. So they exceeded that benchmark, which is a good sign. But, um, at the end, there's two things I wanted to highlight, that even though they beat that six point eight percent, they actually did not hit their own internal benchmark for the fiscal year. They were gonna try to hit ten point three percent. So they actually missed their internal benchmark. Um, and also, number two is that this is still preliminary, meaning some of their asset classes are a quarter behind in reporting. So we'll get final numbers in October. And once you get final numbers, that's when they'll be able to, to provide agencies what that real implication is. And so how does that impact El Segundo? Um, that nine point three percent return really does not have an immediate fiscal impact. The reason for that is because they're, the, whatever performance, um, that they do for that particular fiscal year, it takes two years for that cost to be implemented and spread out for, um, the various agencies such as El Segundo. And so, as of now, I don't have any numbers regards to how our overall, uh, liability will decrease. There will be a neat decrease, but we don't know how much that would be, be due to their performance, and they still need to finalize these numbers. Once it is finalized, I will come back to council during the budget process, probably in, um, next year, in, probably during the budget study session, and give you an update regards to how that implicates, um, our fiscal bottom line regards to how much payments are due for our, uh, UAL, our unfunded accrued liability. Uh, with that said, um, our current funded ratio on our pension side is sitting at ninety point three percent. And so that, when we issued the P O B bonds three years ago, we were at a hundred percent funded, but because of their lack of their performance through the past couple of years, that number dipped below. So it's really a fluid moving target, this funded ratio that CalPERS, um, uh, it really hinges upon their performance, really. And so with that said, um, with the issuance of the P O B bonds, our annual payment of nine point five million dollars still was a great decision by the council, being that we are saving close to three to four million dollars a year, cause if we not issued these bonds, our annual payment would have been close to thirteen million dollars. So we are saving that money there as well. And I believe we are still on track to save approximately eighty-two million dollars in seventeen to about eighteen years during this life of, um, this unfunded liability as it kinda flows through our financials. With that said, that ends my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Does that ninety percent account for our pension trust as well, or is that just on our P O B?
That, that's just our pension liability with CalPERS, yes.
So we're funded, that ninety million, though, we're funded, does that count, does that include our pension trust?
When you say ninety-
You said you were, we're ninety percent funded.
Yes, ninety point three percent funded, yes.
So our, our, our normal costs over there, but we also have a pension trust that we use that we, was, in theory, going to absorb our fluctuated UAL. That's why we went to ninety-five percent on the bond.
Yes.
So is that, is that number, and I don't remember what's in our pension trust now, seven million dollars or something, does, is that accounted for and you're ninety percent funded?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's some good news, for a change, from CalPERS, beating the discount rate.
Didn't hit their benchmark, but still, it's better than their discount.
If we had issued that bond at a hundred percent, and it came through at nine percent performance, we'd have stranded assets. And we know they're not gonna write us a check, so-
Absolutely not.
All right, I don't think there's any other questions for you. Thank you, sir. All right, city, Metta Clerk, any reports this evening?
No, nothing that you don't already know. That nomination period is closed, and we have six candidates, our illustrious three incumbents, and John Pigkaber, Michelle Keldor, and Chris Idomer, and Mr. Lowbrook.
Thank you very much. All right, city treasurer's not here. Councilmember Baldino?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, just wanna thank the chamber. I attended the car show over the weekend. It was a great time. Good to see everybody out there. See some new, um, what is it called? Garage princesses? You know, the cars that never come out? Uh, I wanna thank staff, uh, the whole hands-on deck for that Hyperion tour we did a couple of weeks ago. It was nice to see everyone out there. Uh, and I hope to see everyone at the art walk, which is happening this, uh, this Saturday, three to nine.
Thank you, sir. All right, council member Jerome?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, just wanna thank the chamber. I attended the car show over the weekend. It was a great time. Good to see everybody out there. See some new, um, what is it called? Garage princesses? You know, the cars that never come out? Uh, I wanna thank staff, uh, the whole hands-on deck for that Hyperion tour we did a couple of weeks ago. It was nice to see everyone out there. Uh, and I hope to see everyone at the art walk, which is happening this, uh, this Saturday, three to nine.
Thank you, sir. All right, council member Jerome?
Yes, I actually have two things. Um, first, I would like to, for the next meeting, hopefully, uh, bring back, and hear me out before you roll your eyes, um, the parking pilot program that we're currently working on for two specific things. And that is, I believe there's a space on Pine that we, we kinda missed. It's right between the two areas, and I think staff suggested we do it. We didn't, and then when I went out and looked at it, I'm like, wow, it's like the only spot in the entire area that is not part of the program. Um, the second thing I'd like to discuss is the potential for, um, uh, residents with a permit to be able to park, uh, on that, the north side up against of the park, um, overnight. And the reason being is, I think when I went out there and walked it, you'll have a different perspective how gigantic that area is. And at night, it's completely empty. There's no cars there at all. And I just wanted to be able to bring that back to, to look at it and say, do we wanna put it as part of the program, of the pilot, just to study the data, so that at the end of that timeframe, we kinda have everything in that area? So, I'd like to do that if possible. Any, okay? And then the second thing is, um, kind of a, um, an update on the bicyclist that got hit, um, in an unfortunate accident on August fourth. Uh, really, his name is Jorge Santos. Um, anybody who's been followed on social media can kinda see what went on. It was a pretty horrific accident, and, uh, the man is lucky to be alive. Um, thank you very much, uh, to our firefighters who were on the scene extremely quickly and, um, saved this man's life. But the good thing is, is that, actually, I just heard today, he's actually gonna be moved to a rehabilitation facility, which is pretty amazing considering his injuries. Uh, broken femur, two broken clavicles, two collapsed lungs, every single rib, either broken, fractured, or bruised. Um, broken arm, broken hand. It was, it was pretty rough. I also wanted to mention that, uh, Rockin' Brews, I believe it is this Friday night, uh, this Friday, the entire day and night, um, is holding a fundraiser for them. They actually said they are gonna donate twenty percent of all food and beverage, um, uh, and, and donate towards him, his, his recovery. And, uh, that's really great. I mean, all our restaurants around here do a lot of things, but very seldom is it twenty percent of everything. So, if you have an opportunity to go down there, it'd be helping out a good cause, and, um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilman Prustock?
Yes, so I, um, attended the COG meeting, um, last month, and I wanted to give this award to Elias and his team on behalf of the COG. Um, El Segundo received a gold level in the energy and climate, um, love, uh, category, um, for all their achievement in HVAC upgrades, work on climate, city's cap, education and sustainable action, and work in, from the work from the city. So, thank you to you. Um, and I should think, I, they wanted to get a picture, so if you wanna take a picture, I'd like to get a photo with us, with Elias, so I can send it to the COG.
Since Diane's not here, I'll take a picture.
I do trust you. But redundancy is good. All right. Done, thank you.
One of you sent it to Dianne?
Yes.
Okay. I know. And then, and then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, the staff in getting, we had the, the groundbreaking today for the plunge. Um, it's been a long fight, not fight, but a long task to get that going. Um, I know the, I said it earlier, but the, the previous council, before any of us, um, when they, we built the Wiseburn Aquatic Center, uh, there was a promise made that the plunge would be redone and renovated. And I'm just happy to say that we are fulfilling that promise. And I think it's important for the community that we have a pool that the children and the seniors get to play and learn swimming. So, thank you for that. And, um, an announcement that we had the AED, uh, dedication today for Victoria Gusterson. Um, and thank you to Chief Avery and Battalion Chief Ali. Uh, you know, I drove along with them, looking at places to put additional AEDs. So, there's currently fifteen in our town, and we're gonna add about ten more. And then we're also gonna continue to look for opportunities to put AEDs, which are the defibrillators, in, in public places, so that if there's any, ever an accident or any situation that there's a quick, an area for someone to go to and revive somebody. So, thank you to the, uh, fire, fire department for managing and implementing that system. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protam, you're in town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, several meetings between, um, the last council meeting and today. We met with the new leadership at LAX, at L.A. World Airports. Uh, they gave us an update on the cargo facility, which was, uh, well, first I say, it was a refreshing level of clarity, that there's new, new leadership there, uh, to the point where when we suggested it was almost time for our gate count, they looked at gas status, like, why would you have to count gates? Do you think that the airport would use more gates than they say they do? And then with our stony-faced silence, he's like, oh, in that case, I guess we'll count the gates. So, uh, it wa- it was, it was a refreshing level of cand- candor. Uh, we talked, cargo was certainly a big concern, cause that affects so many of the late-night flights around here. Uh, they were candid in, uh, relaying that it's probably a few years out, but they did not see a way mechanically they would be able to distribute the cargo from that central facility to the different runways. However, they were open to our concerns about moving the actual airframes. Uh, and we got into a pretty nerdy discussion of the different kinds of airplanes that would be involved in that. Uh, they said the people mover, they're looking at construction for, uh, the new route in, and the people mover's probably twenty twenty-six and going forward. Uh, I think there's some real concern that that would not make it in time for the Olympics, which I think was the original target. But I think that the odds of the road being ready by then are pretty limited. Uh, we did see that it looks like Terminal, Terminal Nine is probably, uh, that new United Terminal's- What? City Attorney, you all right?
No, I'm sorry, I was just-
Pretty excited. Uh, Terminal Nine, which is of some concern to us, uh, i- is not in the offing, and for people concerned, Terminal Nine would be the standalone United Terminal, um, in the far southeast. Uh, for the COG transit, few items that are of interest, the, uh, Vincent Thomas Bridge, the complete closure of that. Everyone is on board with closing that for eighteen months, um, which is, you know, the rare, you know, the shocker that you'd have. The Longshoremen, both ports, Metro and Caltrans on the same page to close down a thoroughfare like that entirely for eighteen months. Uh, if any of our residents commute down through there, uh, hold on to your hats. Uh, you know, and I think that part of that, for us, our most proximate concern is Fort MacArthur is tied to the Air Force Base. So if they have people who are down there base housing, or they're using the childcare facilities down there, although most of them use childcare facilities up here now, uh, that will impose a significant traffic burden on them. And you can see, you know, you can read the tea leaves of what that will do to the seven-ten, uh, and the one-ten as well. Metro reported that their ridership data is at eighty odd percent of what it was before the pandemic. Uh, caused a lot of eyebrows to be raised. Uh, they did say it's almost identical on weekends. I was like, well, how many people are commuting on the train on the weekends? Stony silence. But, uh, what that does mean for us, though, is that the, although the Green Line extension is way off into the future, once the Century line, the Century Station opens, which will connect the Green Line to the K Line, paralleling the four oh five, uh, that could be a, a significant, uh, change of quality of life for a lot of people to be able to stay off the four oh five and go up there. And that, uh, again, there's some disagreement, but could be as soon as November. I think by November, they probably meant next, next summer. Um, but that route will be open relatively soon. And lastly, Elias, it's your lucky day. Uh, thank you a bit on the, the leadership aspect. The COG is leading a major culling of projects, of dormant and legacy, uh, multimillion-dollar transit projects that are going nowhere. El Segundo being the first one up to, uh, to gather fifteen colleagues as, uh, Public Works Directors to say, hey, here's my right and left turn lane, or crosswalk, or bridge that we've been just sitting on money for and not taking the project forward. It is a massive exercise in good governance by the, by the, uh, region, and a happy story we can tell our voters. Uh, but that is led exclusively, um, by comrade number one. Uh, South Bay Aerospace Alliance, we met with Wiseburn School District. Uh, I think there's some oddities going on there. There's a big shooting range that, that Redondo's leading. That's a communal thing that we don't really need to participate in, cause we just put a bunch of money into our own shooting range. But, um, that will be some of our collective regional heft at getting tax dollars at work, so that will, uh, make Congressman Lou's life miserable and not benefit us. But, those things happen. Public Safety Task Force, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna talk about that? Okay. Uh, we talked about technology with police and fires, particularly some of the live nine-one-one, uh, the ability to get drones to nine-one-one calls immediately, uh, and the fielding of the Star Chase, which allows the police to basically put a tracker on, on fleeing vehicles. All of this is in the spirit of Mr. Santos avoiding high-speed chases, but still being able to recover stolen property. Um, and so we are advancing with that. We had disaster council. Sorry, guys, I'm almost done. Disaster council- Disaster Council, which for the first time included the school district, which is a big deal because if we have a disaster, shocker, there's going to be a lot of kids involved. And it was the first time that we actually had the school district involved, and they have tons of food, and the new gymnasium is built as a disaster shelter. These are all things useful to know when we have parents running around screaming. They've trained a number of new CERT people, so thank you Todd DeVoe, and we're working on getting their staffing, and he's fielding some communications equipment. And be ready, probably this time next year, we will have our next tabletop exercise for all of city apocalypse plan.
All right, great debrief, thank you. All right, I've got an item under my name, amendment to agreement with Dr. Michael Stentrum to augment scope of services to address ongoing issues with the Hyperion facility. This is, the catalyst for this is really conversations with city manager, director of public works about what we can do to hold Hyperion more accountable, get better communications, knowing that from staff's own admissions, we don't really have the bandwidth to pursue this as much as we'd like, but we know what we'd like to get out of them. And so staff put together with input from, I think, another council member at least, some ideas about how to do that. But basically, the desired outcomes and accomplishments of the additional services provided by Dr. Stentrum via subconsultant could include holding Hyperion more accountable, addressing the issues in a more efficient manner and with better results, enhance air quality, by reducing odor nuisance, better overall communication, improving advanced notifications in a more timely manner regarding maintenance of facilities and our equipment failure. I mean, it became clear to me, we all did the Hyperion tour, that's one thing that no one's mentioned yet, but that was a huge undertaking for all of us. Every council member was there, every staff member, department head, I believe, was there, including fire chief, police chief, city manager, director of public works, you name it. And it became really clear from that tour just how in disrepair that plant is from a preventative maintenance standpoint, from a cleanliness standpoint, bolts laying around, just, and that was supposed to be their best showing for us. And so it's, I think it's, it became even more clear to me after that tour that we need some additional resources at that. We've already called for them to change the leadership. I don't know if you're going to do comments too, Daryl, are you going to talk about that at all, where they're at with that? Okay, great. But anyway, the idea here is to spend not a lot of money, $70,000 annually to help augment Dr. Stentrum to be able to get better results. And the conversation originally was, is he even the right guy? Is he too close to city of LA to be able to hold them accountable? And the answer I got back was, no, actually, he will hold them accountable, he just doesn't have the bandwidth to do that to the level that we would like. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. George or Mr. Sassoon on this item?
Not much, you pretty much summed it up. Yet I did have a conversation with Dr. Stentrum, and he'll be able to utilize additional resources, boots on the ground. And that's really what it takes, having people at the site that could walk the plant and be able to observe what's going on. And my hope is that we'll be able to get Hyperion to communicate with us more often, more clearly, with more clarity, and be able to establish a trust that is so much needed.
Speaking of trust, it's a great segue. I spent seven hours at the AQMD hearing, seven hours that hearing went on.
Yes.
And the AQMD frankly, does not trust what they're hearing from Hyperion staff. The chair of the board told the senior engineer, who happened to be on our tour, by the way, you're lying under testimony. You're lying about what transpired. So it's clear to me that, I don't, I don't think it's malicious, I just think that they're totally in over their head from a competence standpoint. It's good that they're bringing a new plant manager. I'm hopeful that that's the right person that has the kind of gravitas that we need with like a worldwide, global plant experience. But that's not enough, in my opinion. And I think we need to put more resources there. We lost, we just learned, I just learned today, we lost Inspector Haynes from the AQMD. He was our biggest advocate. When I, when I testified, he was there. He testified, he told me exactly what we need to do to hold them accountable. And so we're losing him, and Stentrum's at arms length. So the idea here, again, is to have someone there on the premises, working with them. Of course, it says in your staff report, they have to be open to this idea as well.
That's correct.
Yeah. So any, any questions yet?
Yeah, I just, the idea is we're going to pay someone to go to Hyperion on a daily basis and make sure they're doing their job. I don't know about daily, but.
Not, not daily. The idea is try to interact with Hyperion, to get engaged with what they do and how they do things, and be able to provide our input to the capacity that they are receptive to receive.
Okay, but let's put this in context of that they're already under an order from AQMD to make certain improvements. Right, there was an article today about the EPA settlement that have to make certain improvements regarding water discharge.
Yes, sir.
Those are the authorities that have control to manage Hyperion. As the neighbor, we feel the brunt of their incompetence. We feel the frustration from the residents who don't understand how they're not complying with their basic permits, and they fail to show how they can do that. But I don't see how this city, sending someone to go there to inspect, is going to be the best use of our funds. I mean, we did hire Daniel Pankow here, who is our environmental project manager.
Yes.
Which came of our strategic planning, where we said Elias has spent too much time. Diane has spent too much time on Hyperion. We need someone who can focus and be that link who's going to know what Hyperion's supposed to do when the next chairman of AQMD is, right? So, and I know he's only been here a couple of months, but have we considered whether or not he can fulfill this role for us before we pay for another consultant out of Dr. Stentrum? I mean, Dr. Stentrum was the guy who wrote the ad hoc. He is the end-all be-all of what you're supposed to do is do is treatments. He's very much respected. But I, I'm just not seeing the link of those agencies that have the power and the ability to tell Hyperion what to do versus us. Right, like, our efforts have been complaining to our assembly member and our congressmen and our county supervisors to do something because LA is not listening to us. And now we've got a little bit of a communication with them. But I just, I, I, I think this idea needs to be fleshed out a little bit more so we know what we're spending money on as opposed to letting Dr. Stentrum, you know, he's been helpful. But I, I, someone's got to link how spending money is going to guarantee we've got someone walking that plan, or we've got boots on the ground, because they could just say no. They don't have to listen to us. Like, we've gotten as far as we have with pleases and thank yous and a couple of threats, and we're going to go over your head and maybe we'll go pass some legislation now and again.
Yes.
But it's, I, I, I'm having trouble seeing the feasibility of spending 70-some thousand dollars on someone who is, you know, I think it just needs to be fleshed out a little bit.
So we asked that question, and Daniel's great, and I even asked him at the tour. He doesn't have direct experience managing a wastewater treatment plant. And so we are relying on Dr. Stentrum for that. I firmly believe that having a dedicated resource that's there on a regular basis, assuming Hyperion accepts this, that's there checking on them, will make a significant impact. Presence, physical presence is everything in leadership, number one. Number two, if Hyperion says no to us requiring this, then we have more options available, some of which we just discussed during closed session. But if they blatantly say, we're not going to allow your resource onsite to work with us, we know we have bigger problems. To me, $70,000 is not a lot of money to get the reassurances and improvements that our residents are asking for. Maybe just approved a $2 million software platform for five years. We're talking about $70,000 to quality life of our residents. To me, it's very cost-effective.
Do we think we can get somebody to do, is it, I mean, this is a very specific role that you're ident, that was being identified for 70,000. You know, is that even doable for us to actually find somebody to, to fill this role?
Yes, ma'am. In, in my conversation with Dr. Stentrum, he told me that he knows the individual that, that he would recommend, and he talked to me about his credential. So there's a good possibility that, good possibility that we might be able to find the right person for, for this job. Of course, I must tell you, this is all depends how Hyperion is going to take these things from us, the recommendations, the interaction. Because it, it takes them, it takes them to, to, to be, to partner with, with us. But answer to your question, Dr. Stentrum happens to know the right individual, and we, we've spoke about that to him as well.
So instead of us hiring this consultant, would it not be better to work with AQMD and sub, like, provide them with the additional resources since they are the regulatory arm? Like, how do we partner with, you know, they're the ones that are the regulatory arm, AQMD. So how do we get, enable them to have the bandwidth to ensure that they're focusing on the Hyperion?
So I share my experience with you. I've worked with AQMD. They are about, you know, equal to state agency. State looks at the cities as, as their creatures. Not to say they don't care or they don't like us, don't get me wrong. But if, if my experience is they would not engage the city to be a part of what they do, particularly in terms of enforcement. They, they, they do not do that kind of stuff in that form or fashion. I mean, I wish they did, but they, they do not. They just simply don't.
I, I think you're, you're kind of making the, you're right, $70,000 is not a lot to spend on something like this, but we, we have no knowledge right now whether or not, whether or not we spent it, would, they'd actually allow us to do the things we want to do with it. So I think it's important to understand, and if everybody doesn't know this, that's probably not listening to this, but maybe they'll watch at some point in time. Hyperion is a government entity funded by taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
AQMD is a government entity funded by taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
They have both hired Montrose, which is a third-party monitoring service for the fence line monitoring, and their cell pitch is, well, you know, it's the same one Chevron uses. So when the, the overseen is funding the overseer, all the money, all the money's just going on in a big circle. That's all it is. AQMD can threaten all day long, and they can fine them all day long, all they're going to do is ask for more allocation next year. It's all it is. So I just don't, I, I wish 70 grand would get it done. If it was 150 grand, if it was more than that and it was going to get the job done, I'd say yes. I just don't know, do we know enough right now to be able to make that decision? Because it seems to me that we're just giving the same guy extra money. Is he going to now just spend more time there, or more time on it? Is that our, is that our plan for it? Or are these, is he going to find another guy?
No, no. There won't be any other layer.
It's just Dr. Stentrum.
We, exactly. So we have certain things that I've been asking Hyperion to provide us with, with frankly, with blank response.
I know, I get it. And I think that's the point, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, no, no.
That's the point. We, we've been talking about this exact same thing the whole time. What is actually, do we feel actually is going to work in this process is what we're, is what I'm saying. So maybe it's building on the 70,000, and it's, and it's a bigger thing, whether it's a, whether it's legal or whatever, but I, it just seems we're putting a really small Band-Aid on a really big problem.
I think if they are going to work with us, as long as we, we start the communication, and this individual happens to spend a few hours a week, and, and they see that, that our intentions are to really help them. Our intentions are to really establish a trust. And once they see that, my hope is it would trigger a better relationship and more advanced conversation, which leads to better efficiency, to, to have Hyperion, to have a, a better mechanism, to do what, what the things that they do, which causes odor, and try to avoid that by all means.
Elias, you are a better man than I because you have faith in, in mankind, okay? I'm just telling you, mankind, I get. Government employees at Hyperion, I do, I do not. I, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I wish that was what would happen. But here's the thing, if that was the case, we wouldn't be on year three of this. If what you were saying is true, we would not be three years down the road having the same problems we've had at the beginning. We could say that we made progress, I get it, as residents. They're mad because they're frustrated, I get it, we're all frustrated, we've been, we've been doing this forever, okay? And it's not going away, just like scatter goods not going away, Chevron's not going away, and the airport's not going away. None of these things are going away. So do we need a bigger plan to deal with these four entities that are going to be here far after we're all gone?
We may, but this is a good start. I, 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 I think this is, this would be a good start. And you're right, I have good faith. My hope is they take, they take up for, for what we are offering. We have a new director of public works there, Mr. Rayan Jackson, that has cooperated, or at least has shown to be more cooperative with us.
Yeah, you know, I, I think the success of this person is really contingent upon, and you've all brought it up, the, the, Hyperion allowing this individual to access the facility. I mean, that's really what it is. I mean, Elias keeps mentioning boots on the ground. I just don't know if they're going to do that. I mean, and I think.
So if they don't, they don't. Like I said earlier, if they don't, they're showing their cards right away. We don't even want to be transparent, we're not going to allow you onsite, fine, we know what we have to do next.
Well, I think the potential of it happening could be a little better, only because they do seem receptive to Dr. Stentrum, but they know he's the technocrat. He's there, he's analyzing data, he's looking at chemicals, and they can relate to that. So I, I guess, on one, one hand, if this person is a subconsultant to Dr. Stentrum, maybe they'll extend that, 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 that courtesy, but I, I, we just don't know, it's, it's.
So you're, you're saying that if we spend, say that this, this extra additive person is just an extension of Dr. Stentrum and giving them additional resources to help them continue to improve.
And I think it's the only way this is, that this could work.
Okay.
So Drew, are you saying that if, if we could allocate the 70,000 with the contingency being that they actually let the person into the facility? If they don't, then we don't spend the 70?
There'd be nothing for him to do.
I, I, I can get behind that to allocate it, because you're, you're saying, okay, let's take a shot at it and make them play their card. I, I get what you're doing.
Do we, have we ever floated anything like this by them? I mean, it's a, it's an odd piece, but it's an odd scenario, right? The idea that they would have someone walking around with a clipboard, saying that, look, you're telling me that, you know, the screw pump is doing this, the secondary clarifier is doing that, and this person says, well, no, no, it's not. Or you're telling AQMD it's 90 days away, and I'm saying it's 190 days away. And then that person shows up hearings or briefs us, or conversely, he might say, hey, they're doing great. Hey, they're doing this, and this was an act of God sort of equipment, or hey, this is going on, but they've had 13 people leave, or they've got this many vacancies. I mean, all of those things require a significant amount of transparency, but they may be at a part now where they feel backed into that sort of corner. Do we have any, any inkling that they may be on board? I mean, again, it's, I wouldn't let somebody do it if it was my plant, but, you know, they might be in a different spot.
I think with the pending person that they're, they're recruiting for right now, the new division manager there, I mean, the, the new person, you know, clean slate, we, we get on the ground floor with that individual, maybe they, they would be more likely to accept something like this. Because right now, the Barbara Romeros of the world are not, I, I just don't, I mean, you know her better than I do.
I mean, I spoke with her at that plant tour pretty candidly, and I even suggest an idea that someone brought to me, which is brilliant. Chevron requires their plant manager to live in town.
Right.
I mean, imagine that. Imagine if the Hyperion manager was required to live in town, on the west side of town. But, you know, I mean, seriously.
I got a deal for you. I got a deal for you.
It's a great idea. Sometimes plant managers, Chevron might not want to live in town, but they're required to live in town. And, and I think that based on my conversation with her, I know Ryan was on that part of the tour with me too, I think she wants to, she, she's struggling. She, I believe she wants to get something done for us. And, I mean, we wrote a very public letter calling for her to be let go.
Yeah. If I, if I may, I'm sorry, I had to cut you off, I didn't mean to, go ahead. Oh. So if, if you allow me to add to your comments in response to your question, the signals that I have received from Hyperion, I think they are receptive. And, and the reason I say that, they have met with Dr. Stentrum, they have returned his phone calls, they have answered his questions. And I also have heard that Barbara Romero has been in favor of creating an advisory committee at Hyperion, to be able to kind of oversee the operation of, of Hyperion. And that's a big step. So I can see that she. operation of, of Hyperion, and that's a big step. So, I can see that she is really, has been, been showing that, yeah, she, she really needs help. And she has said that in so many, so many signals that we have received. Not directly, my hope is that I'm correct, and they cooperate with us.
Well, unfortunately, we, we can't control what Hyperion does.
Correct.
But I do think it's a good idea, we try every avenue, right? Why don't we move forward, best-case scenario, this consultant gets access, we get more information about what's going on on there on the ground, maybe it helps the new general manager when he shows up. Hey, here's an independent third party who's been around, who has some ideas for you. Worst-case scenario, they say no, and then we take the next steps from there. But why not give it a shot, guys? Why not try it?
I agree with, I agree with Ryan, and could I recommend, though, that we ask them before we spend any staff time on recruiting anybody, or, like, just, just try out-
I'd be glad to talk to them. I think, I think that's what we'll do next. Yeah.
All right, we gotta vote on it first, but I, I think that's gonna do.
So, I'll move approval.
Okay, do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Baldino on the second, thank you, all those in favor.
Hi.
All right, thank you for your support. City attorney, oh, I'm sorry, before we go there, we had, we were off on recess, it's great to be back, but we also, it was, it was better when we had three meetings off, frankly, not two. I got overruled on that. But, no, it's, because it's, you know, there's a lot, we all got kids and stuff going on. But anyway, it was an incredible summer, it's good to be back, it was, it was a productive one. On the real estate side, we continue to get information about what's happened in the marketplace. I shared with you guys recently that I met with CBRE on some of their market data. I met with Bobby Petticourt, who leads their office on Rosecrans. By the way, they just redid their whole office. Have you been in there since they redid their office on Rosecrans? It's amazing, it's beautiful. So, they're continuing to invest in El Segundo, which is great. CBRE is one of the leaders, they're still totally bullish, there's a lot going on in El Segundo right now. Some major companies are buying land in town, which is really good, some of them, which have been here a very long time, not at liberty to say which yet, but it's really good for the city of El Segundo. Also met with Eric Steebel and Owen Filati, Eric's with CRE, and Owen's with Raze, they also have very promising things to say. I met with El Segundo resident Doug Bernhour during break, he's the CEO of Radiant, he happened to have a daughter, who's, two, two kids, two daughters who are on that soccer team that went to Ireland. But they're onto a very big raise, they're working on microreactors, portable nuclear power, right on Maple Street, incredible endeavor. And they are part of this movement on deep tech, which is a very significant thing, which is a good segue for, we've been contacted a lot recently by, there's a gentleman named Carthick, who's at SIFT. SIFT is a software company focusing on deep tech, they're based on the corner of Franklin and Arena. They just painted that beautiful mural there, if you haven't seen it, it's, I think it's a moon, is it a moon or Mars, Ryan? I don't know, it's one of those, right?
Like a spaceman with a rover or something.
Super cool, red, black, gray, public art that we didn't even ask for, they took it upon themselves. They came to the city, and they said, we want to do L.A. Tech Week, but we want to do a deep tech week in El Segundo. So, that's going on right now, they're playing with Barbara Voss's team, that's amazing. And, and then I had the good fortune to meet with Jason Johnson for lunch, that was great, smart, young, innovative new leader for El Segundo School District, really excited about what you're gonna do for the school district. We had, we all were at a great meeting with the, hard to believe this is summer, Economic Development Corp. at L'Oréal, we learned about some of their ideas and plans. And then, how could we forget the incredible Chargers Training Camp opening? That was, how'd you guys forget that one? That was a highlight, for sure, that was amazing experience. So, it's been a great summer, a lot more to come. Southern Cal Association of Government's been dark, they're not meeting again until September 5th. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney, thank you.
Nothing, city mayor, thank you.
City manager?
Yes, ma'am, just a couple more things on Hyperion. A number of these things were already mentioned, but, yes, in fact, following up on council member Baldino, there was a nice article today in the L.A. Times, sharing that the, you know, as part of the, in, in earlier investigation by U.S. EPA into the 2021 spill, today, the U.S. Attorney's Office did announce that the city of Los Angeles has agreed to spend twenty-point-eight million dollars on, to fix issues at Hyperion. Part of those improvements include control systems, such as integrating the bar screens, the level sensors, and other ancillary equipment, constructing high-level channel flow, obviously, these are all water-related, expanded water quality testing program, including two additional water quality testing sites between Dockweiler and King Harbor. Part of the fix also, they're asking for a one-year community outreach service project to develop an improved emergency communications plan and, and educational outreach. And then finally, they're asking the city of Los Angeles to retain a qualified third-party auditor to conduct annual audits of Hyperion's operations to determine compliance with the improvements in the Clean Water Act. So, now we've got, not only the state AQMD, we've got EPA now that's weighed in, and they're imposing this, this twenty-point-eight million dollar cost to fix items that they, that they're recommending.
Daryl, is that L.A. city dollars? That's not EPA giving them money, right? That's just saying, you gotta spend this money?
That's correct, city, city, city of L.A. dollars. And then, also, also was announced tonight on August 6th, the council, myself, city staff attended a tour, we received updates from Hyperion staff, met with their leadership, including the director and general manager Barbara Romero, and then also Mayor Bass's public works director, Ryan Jackson, who, you know, he's been very helpful, I must admit. I know that sometimes things can be a little slow over at the city of L.A., but Ryan has been on top of things, I think, and, and, and really, at least communicative, he's been, he did share with me yesterday that they've closed the recruitment for the new division manager. At the time, from last week, they had five qualified applicants, I don't know the total applicants, he's gonna get back to me on that. And, and as we shared, I am trying to see if I can get a seat on the interview panel for that position. And then, in the past two weeks, AQMD did respond to approximately eighty-two odor complaints, but none of those did confirm any public nuisance violations. On the 31st of July, AQMD issued a notice of violation of various permit conditions as a result of their annual inspection. And then also, on the 31st, AQMD hosted a hear, a hearing, a board meeting, which you attended, mayor, and at that meeting, the board voted to extend the abatement order to early 2025. And then, in addition, they've scheduled an additional follow-up meeting on September 5th, which we are in the process now of drafting a letter, you know, asking for additional items as part of the abatement process, and we'll, we'll get that out this week. And then finally-
It was, just real quick, I was really good on that, because the board was unanimous that they wanted to add additional items to that order of abatement. So, I know you, Ryan, you've helped out with that letter too, we're getting those incorporated, that's great.
Yep, absolutely. And then, in terms of what's taken place this week, Hyperion did perform scheduled maintenance of their intermediate pumping station. And, but, but with that comes, they're telling us odors may be released, appropriate odor control measures are being taken, are being undertaken throughout the duration of the work. So, there may be some odors during, during the rest of this week. And then also, finally on our tour, we did, I think we all did, each group asked Hyperion to just give us more advanced notice of planned maintenance. I mean, you know, we're hearing the night before that something's gonna happen. So, I think this week, we have, we had a couple days in advance, right, Elias? And we appreciate that, and, and so, you know, let's hope that they continue to do that, give us at least two or three days heads up when they are gonna do some planned maintenance. That's it, thank you.
Daryl, on any of the meetings or anything, are they talking at all to you about any PFAS abatement plans and all this, the, the capital improvements, or any issues with their solid waste disposal locations? I mean, because those could be huge cost drivers for us, those ratepayers.
Right.
They do provide us reports, and part of the reports, they do mention the projects that they have in mind, but they do not provide the, the key, the key information, like how much the cost is, and when it's gonna be implemented. So, in the, when we had the tour, you know, they talk about the new scrubber, and the trickling, bio-trickling scrubber. It turns out to, to cost tens of millions of dollars. It was, it was planned to be implemented by year 2028, and Mr. Drew was, was sitting with me when they made their presentation. So, they do provide that, but, but they're not, they're not very detailed reports, but they do provide that. And, and I, they have indicated to us that based on what they've got going, the rates are gonna be double in next few years. And they don't, they are not shy about that.
Well, there was a ninety percent increase a few years ago that they stole us money on, right? And the, but this is, they, they are, they are buying capital equipment, and then charging us for it, and they have zero precision, and the PFAS thing is coming. I mean, those scrubbers, that's, that's reverse osmosis for, for garbage. And it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be astounding.
Well, they have given us all the credit that they were gonna give us. I don't expect them to really give us any more credit, frankly.
Okay, thank you, adjourned. Thank you.